All right. Well, good evening, everybody. It is already June, June 1st, 2021. And I want to welcome people to the June 1 meeting of the Edina City Council. But before we call this meeting to order, we need to let folks know this meeting is being held electronically, as it has been for over the past year, to comply with the governor's Stay Safe Minnesota order and to ensure the safety of all residents and staff. All the members of the city council, the staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. And there's a few things to cover before we start the actual meeting. As I think all of you know by now, the city has been continually committed to receiving and hearing your input on matters of concern and importance to the city of Edina. We've been collecting public input in a variety of different ways through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important that all of you know that all of these public hearing comments are read before we take action. And you do not need to submit the same information in another way. All communication is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. And so tonight, there's going to be two times folks in our community can call in to provide a public comment via telephone. The first is during community comment, and I think all of you know by now that you can call in and talk to the council about anything that's on your mind, except something that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. And then the second time you can call in is during the public hearing process itself, and we've got three public hearing matters tonight. So if you want to call in for a community comment or to provide testimony for any of the public hearings, call 800-374-0221. The conference ID number is 139-6473, 139-6473. You'll be given three minutes to speak, whether it's community comment or the public hearing. Manager Neil will time you, and he'll let you know when you get to the three-minute mark and you need to wrap up your comments. Remember, you don't need to call in tonight if you've already provided some form of communication on an issue of import to you. But feel free to call in if you think it's important to do so. To make sure residents have an opportunity to participate, we will not act on public hearing matters tonight. The public hearings to collect feedback on preliminary rezoning at 4040 70th Street West. A preliminary plat with variances requested for 5209 Minnehaha Boulevard will remain open until Monday, June 7. You can leave a voicemail with your feedback at 952-826-0377, or submit a comment through the form online at BetterTogetherEdina.org. So there's a form there, BetterTogetherEdina.org. You can fill in to get your comments in on any public hearing matter by noon, Monday, June 7, and we'll talk about that in the context of the motion. So thanks in advance for your patience as we work to conduct this hearing or this meeting online using different types of software. And almost 20 people participating from different places. We hope there won't be any issues, of course, but we'll fix them as quickly as we can. We'll do our best to maintain continuity on the meeting and avoid any technical technological difficulties if possible. But now I'm going to call the meeting to order. As I mentioned before, it's June 1st, 2021. It is now 7:05 PM. And roll call, please, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Havelin.
Here.
All present, and now the next matter on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. You should see a flag on your screen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a form of produced and printed meeting agenda in front of us this evening. I think Manager Neil would like to add something to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And I think we have Chief Dave Nelson retiring. We want to give him a little recognition. Is that the only thing you wanted to add to that portion of the agenda, Manager Neil?
Yes, it is, Your Honor. And we could put that as an item B immediately following the bond issue award.
Okay, I was thinking that we'd recognize the chief right away. But we'll add that to the special recognitions and presentations. Any other adjustments to the meeting agenda from council members? With the addition of the recognition of Chief Nelson being added to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is amended?
So moved.
So moved, second.
It's moved by Member Anderson, second by Member Jackson. Roll call, please. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to adoption of the amended meeting agenda.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Havelin.
Aye. The meeting agenda in its amended form is approved. And now we're going to go to a community comment. And just a reminder again, folks, if you want to call in to talk to the council about something that's of a concern to you, that's not on the agenda tonight and not scheduled for future public hearing, call in now at 800-374-0221. And the conference ID is 139-6473, 139-6473. An operator will ask for your name and address. They'll get you in the queue. You press star one to speak. Director Bennerott will bring you in to the council. And then Manager Neil will be your timer, as I mentioned earlier. And you'll get three minutes to address the council. And then he'll let you know if you run up against the three-minute mark and you need to wrap up your comments. So Director Bennerott, do we have anything, anybody in the queue for a public comment? Anything, anyone wants to address with the council?
Good evening, Mayor Havelin, members of the council. At this time, I don't have anyone on intercall. As you know, though, there is a brief delay in the broadcast, so I would recommend we wait a minute or so in case someone is just trying to get in now. My clock shows that it's a little after 7:08. I'll come back to you when I have a caller or at 7:09, whichever comes first.
Thank you.
It is now 7:09, and I don't have anyone in the queue, so I think it's safe for you to move on with your agenda.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. We will move on. And the next item on the agenda is the city manager's response to community comments from the prior meeting. Manager Neil, anything to report out on?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. There are several items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, member Pierce seconds. The adoption of the consent agenda as shown in the main agenda. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Clerk Allison, with respect to potential adoption of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Havelin.
Aye. The motion to approve the consent agenda is adopted, and the items therein are approved. And now we are on to special recognitions and presentations. I know we've got a presentation on the issuance of some bonds, and I think some really great news there. But first, I think we want to celebrate somebody who's worked for this city for over three decades. And Manager Neil, Chief Dave Nelson, his last day is this, working for the city of Edina is this coming Friday, and I want to turn it over to you to talk about Chief Nelson. There he is.
Thank you, Your Honor, for that introduction. Yes, in fact, we had our employee recognition, employee appreciation recognition event last week, and we did recognize Chief Nelson for 30 years of service to the city of Edina. You know, he came here as a young pup from Anoka County and really worked his way up from the bottom of that hierarchy all the way to the top. I was fortunate to be able to appoint Chief Nelson to his position. He's done a wonderful job for the city, particularly during a time where it's been difficult to be, difficult to be a chief of police anywhere in America, including Edina. He's been exemplary. We've been really fortunate to have him as our leader for a department, especially as that department began to turn over with a lot of, a lot of folks retiring and a lot of new officers coming in. So I just wanted a chance to, to recognize him for the council and, and for you to have a chance to, to let him know how much you appreciate him as well as I do.
Thank you, Manager Neil. I'm sure that was a wonderful celebration last week. Chief, you know, in the years that I've known you, I feel like you're the public safety equivalent of the player's coach. You're the policeman's chief. And I, and I think that says a lot. You know, I know that people that work for you have enormous respect for you, having had the kind of career you've had where you've come up through the ranks. I think you appreciate daily, hourly, by the minute, all the work that they do for you as their leader, but more importantly, for the city of Edina. And it has been a difficult year or over a year, and there have been difficult times in the past, and you've shown strong leadership. And I want to personally thank you for being a wonderful chief of police in the city of Edina. And I think every citizen that asked, has asked you to speak to a group, you've been more than willing to do so and have really stayed engaged with the public as much as you can. So I personally, again, wish you the best after all these years of public service. And I, I don't know what you're going to do, but I know that you'll enjoy yourself tremendously. So thanks for all those years of service.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
You are welcome. And I look forward to Friday. I understand there's one more celebration to be had here at City Hall live.
Two o'clock.
Yeah. Be there Friday. All right. Other members of the council? Member Jackson?
I just want to say thank you so much for your service, and I know that you've been helpful and thoughtful and very patient every time I've had a question, whether it was complicated or whether it was simple. And I just so much appreciate that and, and all of your thoughtful answers and, and spending the time that you do with the citizens. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Member Pierce?
Chief Nelson, I have family members who are police officers in the force and in the military. And I don't envy the job that you do as the chief. But what I always tell my military family members, every holiday, I send them a text message that says, I don't know that I could serve the way that they have, but if my taxes go to support anything they need, I'm happy to pay those taxes. And so I do the same way about being a police officer. And so thank you for all of your dedicated service to Edina. I am looking forward to whatever this next chapter is. But one thing that I can say is that you've left the police force in better state for whoever replaces you. So thank you and enjoy whatever's next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Chief. I wish you the best of luck. I, it'd be hard to imagine to find many chiefs walking around the streets who always have a smile for anybody they encounter. I thank you for that. I think it gives people a sense of reassurance. I know that you spent some time in the school system once upon a time, and I'm sure that those kids flocked around you. And I, so I thank you for your service and the best of luck to whatever comes your way. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Member Staunton, anything to add?
Well, it's hard to top those comments, but I would just add to them my thanks. I had the opportunity to work with you on the Crime Prevention Fund board, and you've been just steady and, and reliable and always there and always willing to help and always being constructive. And as I think Member Pierce put it, you found it. You, you're leaving it better than you found it. So, so a job well done, and we'll miss you. But the best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, for being with us and look forward to, as many of us that can get there Friday, I'm sure we'll be there. So hopefully we'll see you one more time.
It'd be great to see you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Well, we've also, that was some bittersweet news. You know, that was bittersweet, I guess is the best way to put it. But we've got some sweet news coming now from Nick Anhut and from Don Urum. And I know that because I signed the document they needed to have me sign before the meeting. And so I was able to see what was coming. And Director Urum, I'll, I'll turn to you first.
Mayor and members of the city council, as I mentioned earlier at the work session, we sold bonds today at a very competitive rate. And with that, I will turn it over Nick, over to Nick Anhut from Ellers to go through the details of the bond sale.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates. And well, I guess we'll just get to the, the sweet part. But first of all, before we get into the bonds, since you last authorized this issue to finance various projects at the city, I do want to commend the city for defending its AAA bond rating, both with Moody's Investor Service as well as Standard &amp; Poor's global rating. The city has maintained these ratings for nearly 20 years in total and are certainly in a very strong position at this point in time, just as they were when those were initially awarded 20 years ago. The various policies and practices that you all authorize and put in place serve you well. In addition, the participation from Manager Neil, Finance Director Urum, his staff, Andrea Rich, Kyle Sawyer, as well as Bill Nuremeyer on the call was, was top-notch and certainly worthy of this commendation. So to put it very briefly, you're in a very strong position. Moody's, in their report, notes that your local economy and financial profile have maintained a very strong position. You are representing a very large and robust tax base with a growing economy, very healthy cash and fund positions within your main funds. Proactive mitigation measures during the pandemic last year put you in a very strong position, and they recognize that within their report. As far as a challenge that they see, trying to pick something so that it wasn't 100% sweetness, they do note that the city, in comparison to its AAA peers across the country, has an above-average leverage and fixed cost position, mainly in terms of the amount of debt that you hold on your books, as well as the liabilities related from your pension obligations. But these challenges in no way are threatening your current position and your AAA status, merely things to pay attention to going forward. As far as S&amp;P is concerned, much of the same, very strong economy. They do note that the city has extremely very, very strong management practices and robust history of general fund surplus that certainly points to your budgeting practices as being a strength, as well as fund balance and liquidity in your cash positions. And they, they don't note any, any downside certainly, but I think the debt and contingent liability, meaning that your pension obligations, would be something that they see as, as on average or on par with other credits of your AAA status. But to get to the point, the bond issue is to fund a variety of projects throughout the city that are being undertaken in 2021 and 22, various street reconstruction projects, as well as public improvements supporting redevelopment within the Grandview II TIP district. Just under $6 million worth of funding for street reconstruction projects to be paid from special assessments. And then over $8 million in funding for those improvements in Grandview II to be paid from existing TIP district revenue stream within that redevelopment district. This was a public offering of bonds, and we received bids on behalf of the city this morning, and we opened seven of them, which was a very strong level. The low rate coming in at 1.63 indicated interest cost, the high rate at 1.77, just under 1.78. You can see only a 15 basis point difference or 0.15 percentage point difference between the low and the high bid. The winning bid came from Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, but you see there's a wide array of representation, not only from various underwriters and brokers within the Midwest in the form of Baird, Piper Sandler here in the Twin Cities, but also the big players in New York at the bottom of the list there. With the results from Hilltop, we're able to get, achieve a final sizing of just over $13 million in principal amount outstanding. This includes about 1.5 million worth of premium funding that Hilltop provided within their bid. This is going to give you the proceeds necessary to complete the anticipated projects and at a very low interest cost over the life of these bonds. So for the street reconstruction projects, they're going to be paid back from assessments over the next 15 years at a 1.56 true interest cost. And Grandview projects over the next 22 years at a 1.73% financing cost. So extremely low rates, very competitive within the market today. 10-year treasuries are pricing at 1.62% right now. So that's what the federal government is borrowing on their 10-year bonds, and yours are much longer in duration. So very, very competitive rates and indicative of your AAA status, as well as being a prime city within the overall municipal marketplace. So with that said, there is a updated resolution that has been supplemented within your packets. That resolution will authorize the issuance of these bonds, award their purchase to Hilltop Securities. And when we combine everything together, both portions of the financing, it comes in at a 1.67 true interest cost over the full length of repayment, the 22 years that these bonds are anticipated to be outstanding. With that award, the closing will be scheduled for June 24, and that's when the funds will be wired into the city's accounts to, to pay for the initial construction. With that said, that concludes my presentation, but happy to stand for questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Anhut. That was, yeah, always an appreciated presentation when we do so well in, in the markets. And as importantly, the double AAA bond rating from Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's, I don't know if Director Urum wants to comment on that or Manager Neil, but certainly you're in, you're out, having that double AAA bond rating has helped keep our borrowing costs at a very, very competitive rate. Director Urum?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the city council, the one comment I would like to make is the proactive stance that we took in terms of the pandemic last year was really recognized by both Moody's and S&amp;P. So I think that the city council, supporting staff's recommendation for a budget amendment and that, the other changes that we made were very helpful in maintaining the AAA bond rating.
Thank you. Manager Neil, anything, any comment relative to the borrowing or the double AAA bond rating designation again? Oh, it looks like we've got a bad internet connection from Manager Neil. All right, folks, is there someone who would care to move Resolution 2021-46, which would authorize the issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment of $13,025,000 in general obligation bond series 2021A to Hilltop?
So moved.
Second.
Again, a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce to adopt Resolution 2021-46 as stated. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor Havelin.
All right. The resolution is adopted. Congratulations to all involved. Director Urum, thank you for your good work, your continuing good work.
Right, thank you.
It's always good to have you with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Congrats.
And then here's Manager Neil back to talk about the double AAA bond rating and his thoughts on that.
Now, what I was going to say is just to let you know that we, we all play a role in this double AAA rating. You know, it, it, when the credit rating agencies look at Edina or, or any city, they're judging us based on not only what our financial practices are as an organization, but they're also looking at the strength of the local economy, they're looking at the strength of the staff, and they're looking at the strength of, and the, and the stability of the political leadership of the community, too. All those are factors that go into what our credit rating, credit rating agency thinks about us and, and what they're going to tell the market about us via a bond rating. So we all play a role in it, and we're fortunate to have strong, strong elements all the way through our organization, including council members and, and our, on our staff and our economy as well.
But thank you, Manager Neil. Councilmember comments at all? Okay, everybody's got a smile on their face. It's, it's a good thing. All right, let's move on to the public hearings. And we've got three public hearing matters this evening. And the first one, Director Teague has, which is a presentation by the applicants with respect to the property located at 4040 70th Street West. It's embodied in Resolution 2021-44, ordinance number 202105, and preliminary rezoning request from PCD III to PUD. And as I mentioned, it's at 4040 70th Street West. Director Teague?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council? Did the PowerPoint come up?
It did.
Okay. So this property is located in the Greater Southdale District. It's just west of France Avenue with the intersection of Valley View Road and 70th Street. The site exists today with a two-and-a-half-story office building. You can.
Carrie, Carrie, could you, could you put it in presentation mode just so we can get a little larger view?
Thank you for that. Sorry about that.
Yeah, that helps. Thank you, Member Staunton.
Okay, so the property is zoned plant commercial district, Plant PCD III. So it's the same zoning as the Galleria and the Southdale site, this is to the east. The site has a building height overlay maximum of four stories and 48 feet. Site's diet is in our comprehensive plan for office residential use, which allows up to 100 unit, or up to 75 units per acre on this, on that light pink area on the west side of France. Site's also located in what we call a transition zone, where the land uses on the west side of France are intended to transition from the single-family district to the west into the more intense commercial district where Old Dale, Galleria are located. So the applicant did go through sketch plan review, so a quick look at the, at the sketch plans that we looked at. And they've made a number of revisions based on the comments from the Planning Commission and City Council. They've enhanced the pedestrian walkways. They've provided a connection from the main lobby to Valley View Road. They widened the sidewalk along 70th Street, shifted the building back a little bit from 70th to meet the required setback, improved the architecture, improved landscaping, and reduced lighting. So this is a project they are asking for a rezoning, so it is one where the city does have a complete discretion as to approve or deny. That said, the uses that are proposed here would be a conditionally permitted use under the current zoning. So the proposal is to tear down that little office building and build 118 units of senior affordable housing. There would be 86 underground stalls and 23 surface stalls. This is a look at that, at the plan. You can see the widened sidewalk. I'll just quickly move through the building plans. The applicant will go through a little more, little more detail. The applicant will go through a little more, little more detail. Boulevard style sidewalks. This is a look from 70th Street. Uh, at the planning commission meeting, uh, uh, shadows, there was a, a big issue through Better Together, um, through the Better Together website, we received a lot of concern from the daycare to the east. And the applicant has actually expanded on the shadow study that was shown at the planning commission. Um, so this shows that, uh, that the top couple rows shows the June 21st. So as you can, so here's the daycare and the proposed building. So as you can see, as it moves into, into the evening and even at 5:00 PM, the daycare, the play area, which is located behind the building, uh, is still within sunlight, even, even just before sunset. In the March and September months, uh, you can see as it gets later into the evening, the daycare, uh, still at 5 o'clock shadows are beginning to approach. In the winter time, even as late as 3:00 PM, uh, there's no shadows. Four, five and six, um, again, at, at sunset, it would be dark. Um, so the, 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 uh, the shadows, um, casting aren't quite as, um, don't provide as much of an impact as originally thought. So the request, uh, that's requested here is a rezoning from that PCD3 to PUD. The PUD zoning ensures the long-term affordable housing on the site and also, as with all PUDs, ensures that this is the specific building that would be built on the site. So a quick review of the site plan, the underground parking is accessed off of Valley View Road. The proposed landscaping is far in excess of what our code requires, over double the number of overstory trees, be a couple of rain gardens along Valley View Road. Building itself, uh, would be, stone with, um, metal panels. Again, the architect will go through that in a little more detail. So flexibility is requested through the PUD zoning for setbacks, specifically the north setback would be 10 feet. The east setback toward the daycare would be 10 feet. The floor area ratio is slightly over the code requirement at 1.0. And the number of parking spaces required, they're slightly under the required number of parking spaces per the current code. There was a traffic and parking study that was done by Wenkin Associates, Ed Terhar. Uh, and Mr. Terhar is with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have. Um, but the study does conclude that the parking that's proposed, uh, will accommodate the site, actually needs about 72 spaces. Then there's no improvements needed to the adjacent roadways. There would actually be a reduction in the number of trips generated from this site in the PM and AM peak times. Overall, there would be more trips generated, but within those peak times, uh, there would be less. The primary issue, uh, is the proposal reasonable to justify the PUD rezoning. In this case, uh, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. Um, we believe that the proposal is consistent with the district plan in regard to the height, use and density. Again, it meets that, the four-story maximum. There's three stories on the street and steps back or, um, into the more, you know, oh, as you move away from Valley View, uh, that's where the four-story starts. The project, and most importantly, does provide 118 units of affordable housing that would go toward meeting our council goals. Again, that's really the most important criteria within the, the PUD criteria as well. And as mentioned, uh, the, the project would be supported by the parking and the existing roadways. Uh, we did receive a number of comments on Better Together, many of them, uh, dealt with those shadows and concerns from the daycare that the applicant, um, has addressed with the shadow study. Uh, those that were for the project thought it was a thoughtful design, um, mostly, uh, needed use and support for the affordable housing. Those that were against it, um, cited there was not enough parking, the negative impacts on the daycare, as I mentioned, there was a lot of comments in that regard. Um, that the project is too close to single family homes and that the project is too dense. So with that, again, I will stop there and answer any questions you may have, but the recommendation this evening is to close the public hearing at noon on June 7th and continue action to the June 15th meeting. And again, both staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. The planning commission vote was, uh, eight to one. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have now, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
All right, thank you. Director Teague, uh, Member Jackson.
Thank you, um, uh, Director Teague, I did not see an environmental, um, questionnaire on here. Did I miss it? I don't, I don't see it on the list of documents. Did they fill one out?
Oh. I'll, I'll have to look. I apologize. I believe they did. I may have just missed that and not got it in the packet, but I can, I can look that up.
Okay, yeah, if you could get that to us, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right, uh, Director Teague, uh, from my, um, agenda, it looks like you've talked to Mr. Min, uh, and Mr. Rosenau about taking approximately 15 minutes to make the presentation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Min, welcome and Mr. Rosenau.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Members of the council, good evening. Thank you for letting us, uh, participate this evening. Uh, just a quick refresher on the progress of the project. By the way, my name is again, for the record, Steve Min, and I live at Seven Overhull Pass in Edina. Uh, our team of, uh, Loopy Development and Ekumen was selected by the Edina Housing Foundation in October of 2020 to acquire the site and develop the 100% affordable senior housing. This will be arguably the first fully affordable housing development in the state, a breakthrough in our financing structure. We've negotiated with the foundation that will allow for 99 years rather than usual 30-year commitment for most projects. We're very proud to be, uh, setting this important milepost in Edina. We have been working with the neighborhood and various public stakeholders for over six months to get the right mix of design amenities, the site benefits. We've had two neighborhood meetings plus a walkthrough of the site with neighbors to get the right mix. Uh, we mailed invitations to all of our neighbors within a thousand feet to join us, as I said on the Zoom calls, and then about two weeks ago walked with the neighborhood associations. Uh, we've also attempted and I think reached a good, uh, at least starting conversation with Kinderberry Hill, and I think they're somewhat assuaged about the concerns that were initially raised about shadows. I think the studies have been very effective in showing that this will not be an impact on that, uh, childcare facility, which by the way, my children went to, so it's, it's near and dear to my heart. Uh, you might recall, we were here in front of the council, uh, for sketch plan in February. I think we received some very positive feedback about how to change the project. I'm going to let Mr. Rosnow go through those details. Uh, but with us tonight is also, uh, Ann Stanfield, my partner from Ekumen, who's here to answer questions about management of the site. He's also brought our site engineer, uh, here and our project manager. So we're well prepared to, uh, address your questions if you have. Now I'll turn it over to Zach to maybe just walk through the, uh, the mechanics of the site, please.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Min. Mr. Rosenau, welcome.
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, I'll share my screen here. Uh, so this, this is the, uh, presentation that you just saw with, uh, Carrie. Um, let's go through it here quickly. I'm familiar with, uh, the context. We looked at the site from a number of different angles, uh, looking at the different street views and, um, neighborhoods and, um, again, the transition zone, uh, from residential over to, um, France Avenue. Again, here it's kind of a residential, uh, context study. Here's our, uh, quick clear site plan, as Carrie mentioned, 118 units, 108 spaces. Uh, total, we have roughly, uh, 86, um, below grade parking spaces. We have a, a central lobby, uh, and some amenities. And also down here in the southwest portion, we're going to have, um, an art room, community room, a space for, um, to engage the public to come, uh, in and out of the building. So just the units as they march up, we, we wanted to incorporate stepping into the massing of the building to make sure that we, again, underscore that transitional, uh, zone from, um, the residential over to the, um, the more commercial, uh, to the east. Uh, Carrie touched on a couple of different, uh, of the, the number, the numerous, uh, improvements that we made since sketch plan. Uh, we kind of divided them into pedestrian site layout and building improvements. The pedestrian, uh, update that we made, uh, starting at the lobby here, um, we extended a sidewalk down past the community room over to the west, uh, to improve the walkability of the site. Also up in the northwest wing here, uh, we have a sidewalk that comes out, up and around, uh, one of the rain gardens out to Valley View Road. It, it was important to get, um, the pedestrian traffic also out to 70th, so we incorporated a bike room down in the southeast corner with a corridor that comes out, um, so that you can access the, um, the public sidewalk on 70th. And both the public sidewalks on Valley View and, uh, 70th are going to be widened from, uh, six feet to eight feet. Get a little bit more, uh, pedestrian friendly. Since, uh, sketch plan, we, uh, found that we have a sewer easement that goes east-west on the south side of our site, uh, and also one that goes sort of diagonally northwest to southeast, uh, that we need to do accommodate. So our whole, um, southern end of the building has shifted 10 feet north to accommodate, uh, that. Um, so there was a slight reduction in parking and, um, and we absorbed that sort of through the middle, um, of the building here. Uh, for just circulation clarity, our, we now have two curbs. Uh, instead of three, we, we eliminated, uh, the divided, uh, drive here off of Valley View. Um, lighting on the site is going to be, uh, down lighting to eliminate, um, noise or, uh, light pollution. And we've, uh, continuously been studying and, um, researching what's required in this area for rain gardens and, um, underground, uh, rainwater system to accommodate, uh, a large amount of, um, potential rainwater, uh, in this area. As far as the building, um, we have darkened that here, uh, building color from a, a white to, uh, sort of a light gray or mid-gray. We've got some comments from the neighborhood about reflectivity, and so we, we toned that, uh, down a little bit to reduce the, the sun's albedo. Um, the east side here has been further articulated to give the, uh, the building more of a, um, human scale, um, give it a little bit more interest from the, uh, the view from the east. Our stone and brick is, uh, Carrie mentioned is going to be a thin brick so that we can get, um, the matting that we're looking for here. And overall, the materials have been adjusted to incorporate, uh, a larger quantity of glass so we can allow more daylight into the units, uh, and reduce the amount of, um, fiber cement and solid wall material. Here's a few of the, the views that Carrie went through. View from 70th again. Material palette and the, um, and the shadow study that, that Carrie had mentioned. This is the, this is the existing shadow study, and we did do a proposed building shadow study as well to, to create a comparison. You, I don't know if you want, uh, speak to that a little bit more?
Uh, Zach, I will. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, the first study that we did for the planning commission did not include, uh, the 3:00 PM, the 4:00 PM and the 6:00 PM calendar. There was some concern we did not provide enough detail. We individually contacted the Kinderberry Hill executive team and shared this detail with Mr. Teague and his staff. And we have had no further, uh, comments, uh, or objections, um, since sharing that material with them. So we believe we've addressed, uh, the issue and the concern. We're looking forward to having, you know, further engagement with Kinderberry Hill. I think the, uh, the opportunities for intergenerational connection are very, very real for these two, uh, valued uses, and I think you'll, you'll see us, uh, play that card, uh, with the Kinderberry staff as, as aggressively as we can. And, and, Mr. Mayor, we're, in, in the, in the interest of, uh, preserving your time, maybe we'll just leave the remainder of our presentation for you for question and answer. We, I think we've addressed the primary issues that were brought forward at sketch plan. Uh, I think the materiality and the rhythm of projection on the east was a major concern and the connections on Valley View. So, uh, if you have additional issues or if members of councils have questions, we'd be happy to stand for those.
Would you go back to that immediately preceding slide to the shadow study? Please, I, I missed all of the materials. Yeah, materials board, okay.
Materials, this one?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could comment on the materials generally, you know, it was, that was one of the great things about being, uh, in chambers, we could, we could look, touch and feel the materials involved and, and would you, would you articulate, uh, in a little bit more detail, the types of materials that you're going to use?
Yeah, so our, our main materials, we wanted to use, um, subtle tones, we wanted to use more earth tones. We're, we're using a darker gray, uh, metal panel, that would be the, a vertical, we're thinking vertical orientation. To ground the building, we're going to use a, um, stacked light colored stone, that'll be the, um, the thin brick, which will allow us to, to go up and around some of these forms and create a, uh, a nice anchored, uh, structure. We'll have lap siding, of, you know, likely, um, party board or, uh, LP, some fiber cement that'll be, uh, two different colors. Most of our, uh, accents then, uh, balconies, sun shade will be made up of, um, black anodized or black powder coated, um, metals. And then our windows will also be, um, black to, to really pop off of the, the field that is the, um, the lap siding and the, the stones.
Very good. Thank you for that. Councilmember questions for Mr. Min, Mr. Rosenau, or for Ekumen? One other question I have was, um, uh, Mick Johnson over at the architectural field office, uh, in his letter dated January 6th, uh, and we may have talked about this already, but, uh, since this is the public hearing, uh, would you comment on his idea of, uh, what he called flipping the entrance and why you think that, yeah, it doesn't work in this situation? As I recall, you had a, you had an answer to that question when it was raised before, but I think it's important to keep it in, uh, uh, you put it, make sure it's in the public hearing, uh, record as well.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zach, if you wouldn't mind, put the site plan up. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we, we, uh, evaluated two site orientations. We call this version that we're going forward with, with your approval, the letter J version. Uh, but we did have a letter C version where the building, uh, was essentially facing east where a drive entrance was, uh, uh, accessed from west 70th. Uh, and the bulk of the building was to the back toward the single family neighborhood, which is what Mr. Johnson recommended we consider. There were some operational issues with that. Uh, first and foremost, it created a very small drop-off area and a very tight ambulatory access area for dropping off and picking up, uh, patients from an ambulance perspective would cause a, a very difficult backing up four or five-point maneuver for large vehicles. Uh, it presented, uh, a very large massing on the west side that did not present well for, uh, the rain gardens, and we had been advised by the neighbors that the, uh, flooding on Valley View was substantial and that we had to make some contribution with the rain gardens and our storm, uh, management system, which is quite substantial under the surface parking. And that was not available to us either in the C-shaped building. So we considered those two factors critical. And then the last piece was when we talked preliminarily with our traffic engineer, uh, ingress egress on 70th would be right next to Kinderberry's exit, drive aisle, and just before the traffic circle. And there were a number of potential conflicts at peak traffic times with that type of maneuver, and that was sort of. And that was sort of the icing on the cake for us to not proceed on the C-shaped building.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Min. That's helpful. Other questions from council members at this point in time? All right. I think am I missing somebody?
Just me, Anderson.
Oh, thank you. I can't see on the screen. Maybe you should take your, take the PowerPoint on. There you are. Thank you, Member Anderson.
Yep, thanks. Mr. Min or Mr. Rosenau, could you pop the elevation, the front elevation up again? So my question is really about the, you had a different view here, might have been the preceding screen. I just wanted to get an idea of the amount of vertical metal siding that you're using. There's another elevation, the higher elevation shows an angle.
Sure.
There it is.
The Councilmember Anderson, the graphic that we just left actually has the percentages
Okay.
of material.
All right.
So maybe Zach could zoom in on that, but then we can go back to the picture if you'd like to see it, but
Yeah.
There's our percentage on the total building.
Okay.
11% masonry, 32% metal, 25% cement fiber and 32% class.
Okay, right. Yeah, it would be useful just to take a look at that elevation one more time, the prior elevation. Yeah, so I guess the only, the only point that I would make is, and I think we've touched base on this in the past. The, this is one of the probably most visible noticeable locations along Seventieth. And so that look and the feel and how people approach it, see it is important, I think. I don't, I, it's, as the mayor mentioned earlier, it's when you're in chambers, it's so much easier to look at the materials and kind of evaluate it. So it's hard on this basis. If I had any concern here at all, and, and I do want to commend you for making these changes because I think they're substantive and they're going to work out very nicely for you. It would just be how much of that material and the appearance of it. That's, so just throw this out now. I noticed that especially over on the left side of the screen, quite a bit there. And not only from the automobile traffic, but also from the neighborhood and how they view the building. Your choice about your entry and your drop-off is the right one, I believe. And to me, it's inviting to the neighborhood as well because you're open to it as opposed to closed off from it. And I think that's, I think that's, that's very solid, but that amount of fighting, then the only other question, this could be for your manager, are there balcony guidelines in terms of what can go out there? Is there going to be kind of, we don't want that to be too junky in that highly visible area.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, I'm going to defer to my colleague Ann Stanfield from Ekumen to speak to the management issues, but we will have some restrictions on balcony. Ann, let me take that up.
Okay.
Yeah. Good evening, Ann Stanfield from Ekumen. Thank you for having us tonight. In terms of what is allowed on our balconies, you know, we are really focused primarily on safety. So we, you know, limit limit what can be out there to ensure that the residents are safe. We keep it to furniture. We don't allow grills out there. But I think, you know, we certainly would work on what is appropriate for the site. It's usually a case by case basis. And, you know, we understand you wouldn't want it to look messy. We keep it neat. I mean, ideally, we, we have, you know, we encourage plantings and that type of thing, which is typically what we will see in our senior buildings that have balconies. People really enjoy having that private outdoor space that they are giving up generally in a single family home. And so it is much more focused on furniture and plantings typically.
Sure. So good. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions from council members? At this point in time? I cannot see everybody, so if you speak up, that would be helpful if you're interested in speaking with the development team. I had one other question too. I was thinking about it as I was looking at this aerial elevation looking east. I think one of the things we talked about in sketch plan was some articulation of the, of the wall sheet along Seventieth. In other words, the importance of not having a single plane but moving that that, that line in and out. So it developed a little bit of irregularity, if you will. Some consistency, but that you weren't just operating on a, on a single wall line. I don't know if you, it looks to me like you've done a little bit of that from what I can see here, but I'm not sure. What are your thoughts there, Mr. Rosenau?
Yeah, primarily where we, where we put the articulation was on the east facade. We did design some on the south side here with, on Seventieth. Prior to setting the building back an additional 10 feet for the sewer easement. So right now what you're seeing here is primarily a depth of material. But I I understand, you know, the need to get a little bit of articulation there. We do have some, like I said, we do have sidewalks that are coming out of there, so we'll have some awnings and some overhangs that'll help get a little bit of shade and depth to that facade too.
All right, that will help. And I realize it's the, it's the short expanse, but still it's right along Seventieth, which is a well-traveled street and we wanted to look as good as possible to the point that Member Anderson was making with some of the other aspects of the building. I think taking a look at our, at some further articulation or features along Seventieth that would help break up that that single plane notion would be helpful, Mr. Rosenau. Thank you for that. All right. Does that prompt any other questions from council members? All right, this is a public hearing matter. Going to turn now to the public. You can call in now at 800-374-0221. The conference ID is 1396473, 1396473. And we can take your testimony. An operator will ask for your name and address and they'll put you in the queue and you'll press star one and then Director Benarot will bring you in to testify before the council. Director Benarot, do we have anybody in the queue with regard to this particular matter?
We sure do. Our first caller tonight is Ms. Nora Davis. Operator, will you please unmute Nora's line? And then Nora, once your line has been opened, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Her line is now open.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Nora Davis and I live at 6921 Southdale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. But before I start what I planned to say tonight, I just wanted a clarification and that was on the traffic issue. Actually, the complex will bring 144 additional trips per day, but that's for a total of 437 trips per day. So when I look at it, that's more traffic, not less traffic. Okay, I am calling to express my concern about the setbacks. As you know, my neighborhood is projected to flood yet again. And the 4040 site actually sits up above our neighborhood, five to six feet. And as I look out on Valley View Road, I envision floodwaters racing toward our homes. You know, with climate change, those rains are coming harder, faster and more frequently. And our neighborhood isn't looking forward to the next flood. Reducing those setbacks will mean removing much needed green space and mature trees. Mature trees absorb water and each tree absorbs 48 pounds of carbon dioxide a year. Green space absorbs water, filters that water and slows the release of water into the sewers. There's been a lot of conversation about a climate action plan for Edina. Here is an opportunity to put those words into action. Please vote no on reducing those setbacks to just 10 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Our next caller tonight is Ms. Lori Groats. Operator, will you please unmute Lori's line? And Lori, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes. Line is now open.
Thank you. My name is Lori Groats, 5513 Park Place. On a previous call with the developer, I had asked a question for this project if it would be income and asset based. And I was told yes. So this perhaps might be a question for Ekumen. What would be the income, the upper income level and the asset base for one person? And then I have a follow-up question, please.
Yes, please ask your questions and we'll address them when the public hearing testimony is completed today. Thank you.
All right. Okay. My second question is if it's, I was told before it was based on assets also. If there's a homeowner in Edina that wants to move into this and sells their house, then I would assume they are no longer eligible to enter into the building because once they sell their home, their asset level would be large enough, would be high enough that they would no longer qualify. So I want to know what the asset base is if we're building affordable housing for seniors that will only benefit people that don't live in the city of Edina. Thank you so much for your time and assistance. Bye now.
Thank you, Ms. Groats.
I do not have any other callers at this time. Because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on in case others are trying to call in. My clock shows that it's 8:03. I'll come back to you when I have a caller. Or, actually I have one right now. It just works great that way. Our next caller is Ms. Roberta Castellano. Operator, will you please unmute Roberta's line? And Roberta, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Her line is now open.
Thank you. Roberta Castellano, 4854 France Avenue South. Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to start by observing on the revised shadow study. I was looking at that and and the property is just, it, it just looks like it's just not represented correctly because I believe that the setback to the building along the east side is actually only 10 feet from the property line. And so in the drawings, what looks like the 4040 property, I believe is really the driveway to the the Kinderberry.
Okay.
So I guess, you know, and I have a concern about that setback because of course I think, well, you know, what's going to be the next building that comes along and is going to have, you know, be requesting those kinds of, you know, 10 feet is not very much of a setback. And, you know, I went, I live right across the street from the White Oaks apartment, so I went over there and and, and I went along their east face which faces France Avenue. And I measured from the building to the sidewalk and it was 18 feet, four inches. Wow, you know, it's so shallow and, and I just thought 10 feet, that's just so much more shallow. And I just wonder what development will be coming along the way that's going to add to that. And, and then also regarding traffic, I think Nora touched on the traffic issue that, you know, that that'll be bringing traffic seven days a week now. So that's going to be not only an increase in a, in a day by day, but it'll also be an increase over the week because there'll be activity on the weekend too. So I guess that's it for now. I'm still kind of looking things over, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castellano.
Again, I do not have any other callers at this time. Because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on in case others are trying to get through. My clock shows that it's 8:06. I will come back to you at 8:07 or when I have a caller, whichever comes first. It is now 8:07 and I do not have any other callers, so I think it's safe for you to move forward with your agenda.
All right, thank you. I think we should cover these, some of these questions that were raised by some of the public testifiers. As long as we have the applicant's team here. Nora Davis had a concern about the traffic report asserting that there was actually more traffic that's going to be generated here, not less traffic as represented. Director Teague, do you want to have Mr. Har address this issue?
Yes, please. Mr. Terhar? Can you hear me okay? Hello, can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Terhar.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the, as shown in the traffic study, we looked at both the peak hours, the AM and PM peak hours and the daily traffic trip generation. And since this is a redevelopment site, we do account for removal of the existing use. So when you account for that and the trip generation for the proposed use, which is the senior apartments, the analysis shows that in the AM peak hour, we actually end up with 11 fewer trips in the AM peak hour. It's one hour in the morning. PM peak hour, we end up with four fewer trips, four less trips than the existing office building. But on an overall daily basis, a 24-hour period basis or timeframe, we do, the project does result in a addition or an increase of 144 trips. And that's primarily because the office use, the majority of their trips are focused in the peak hours, people coming to work and then leaving afterwards. Whereas the senior apartments are spread out more throughout the day and not as many peak hour trips. So that's really where that difference comes in. It's important to remember that the daily number is over a 24-hour period. So an increase of 144 trips over a 24-hour period is still a very small increase.
Thank you, Mr. Terhar. The next question was about potential risk of flooding from the site into the neighborhood. And I think Director Teague, you talked about tree scape and then rain gardens, but I don't know whether Mr. Min or Mr. Rosenau would like to comment on some of those concerns, which I think were concerns of yours and the city, of course, as well. And maybe Director Teague wants to comment too, but.
Yeah, I might ask Director Milner to comment on the flooding issue.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Yeah, there is a known issue in the neighborhood to the west. Staff has given feedback to the development team on the risks and stuff that we want to see. The applicant could probably speak to their plan better than I, but I noticed on their plan, they do propose two rain gardens and an underground storage tank underneath their parking facility that I believe addressed the concerns staff has shared with them about not increasing any of the risk of flooding to that neighborhood to the west.
And is that, is that the conclusion you've come to, Director Milner, is that this building, if approved, would not increase the risk of flooding to the west?
Correct.
With those, those actions that they would intend to take?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Min or Mr. Rosenau, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll just simply offer that
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I'll just simply offer that we have explained to the neighborhood on several occasions that the rain gardens are critical to the curb water issue, but the storm storage system under the surface parking lot is the key to controlling rate of flow and volume. And that's the secret in our sauce. That's, that's the engineering. We've done that successfully in many other projects. The rain gardens are really about quality of the water, but it's the flow control and the rate in the storm source system that's the key here. And I think Mr. Milner will, can talk to you a little bit about that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Min. Mr. Min, I've got you on the line. Ms. Costolano had expressed a concern over the shadow study and thought the rear yard setback to the east was 10 feet, and I think that's accurate from Mr. Teague's chart, Director Teague's chart. Could you explain that situation a little bit in more detail? Oh, the shadow study was done, or Mr. Rosenell?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll just, Zach, if you put the study up, I think it's important to point out that it's 10 feet of our building setback to the property line. And then there is the driveway of Kinderberry, which is to the east of our property line. And so it's, it's about 20 feet, little, just a little under 20 feet from our building to their building. But the study was done to the building, not, this is the existing condition that you're looking at with the existing office building. And then Zach has another template showing our building. And you don't see, that's the property line there that he's highlighting. There's a shadow, obviously, to the orientation, but the majority of the shadow, we're west of them. So the sun still rises in the east. And until the sun reaches its apex in the afternoon sun, there's, there's very little chance that we'd be shadowing them until after, really after 5 o'clock.
All right, thank you for that. And then there was a question by Lori Groats about income and asset-based qualification for a single resident. I don't know if Ms. Stanfield is prepared to answer that question or Mr. Min?
I can take that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Min.
The current income limits and rents as published by the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for the current year, we would have a range on a single-person household. The income limits in our building would be running at the minimum 36, 750 a year, all the way up to 58, 8 a year. Those are the income limits for a single-person household. And the rents calculated would be somewhere between $984 a month for the lowest level, all the way up to $1,575 a month. Those are the income limits and the rent limits. The question about asset calculation, there is a formula that has to be reviewed and tenants are income-tested every year to meet the qualification test. They are allowed to keep some assets, but obviously if you have a million dollars of assets, it's going to be a disqualifying number. I believe the current asset threshold is about $450,000.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Min. Did any of those questions or answers prompt any council members to want to inquire further on any particular matter? Member Anderson?
No, thank you. I, this is for Mr. Terhar, if you're still on here somewhere. Is this here? Well, I, my question is, I just noticed I'm on, I'm on Table 41 here and, but I'm not seeing any reference at all to weekend traffic. Now, I understand that there was probably very little, so we wouldn't necessarily be comparing that against the office use. But we've seen a little bit on Better Together and also some emails discussing the fact that there would be weekend activity that the neighborhood has not experienced in the past. So I just wanted to, your point of view on that?
Yeah, the study, we focused on weekday, which is typical for the traffic studies, but those comments are accurate. There would be additional traffic from the site on the weekends. The office use would have very minimal, the existing office use would have very minimal traffic. But the amount of traffic generated by the, by the site is still relatively small compared to the traffic volumes on the surrounding streets. So there would be some change, but I don't see an issue with the actual operations based on those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Min, with the stormwater treatment, I understand you've explained nicely how it works, but is it an improvement over what's currently there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jackson, of course it is because currently it's mostly impervious surface. We're going to have a much higher percentage of pervious surface with our rain garden system and our green space. But the storage system is designed to, in a compact site like this, manage the rate of flow. It's, it's designed to not only absorb the water, but control the rate in which it's released into your system. And that's what's key. It's peak water that causes the flooding and where it jumps the curb. So rate of flow control is, is the magic to, to the solution here.
And currently, there is no rate of flow control in the site?
No, it's a downward slope with an asphalt parking lot and, you know, water runs downhill and it gains ahead of steam as it gets to the curb and jumps.
Okay, thank you very much.
That reminds me, Mr. Min, one of the concerns I think that Nora Davis had was whether there would be less green space or more green space due to this project. And also the tree cover, you know, the number of trees, her concern that trees absorb water. And I thought, I heard Director Teague say you were adding trees, more trees than were there or required.
Mr. Mayor, that's true. Unfortunately, we have to lose some very nice trees in order to get our underground parking system in. I did discuss that with Nora when we walked the neighborhood group along with her neighbor contingent. But we are replacing on pure tree count, we're over-delivering to what is currently on the site, both at pedestrian scale and over in the hyscape. We have a nice mix of trees flowering and also canopy-sized. And they are on both the south and on the west. We don't really have a lot of room for trees on the north, but we have a fair amount of bush and flowering plants on the north.
And then the total green space, is that changed? Is it more or less, and what is there present, what's there present?
We have more green space in this design than on present.
Thank you. All right, that prompt any other questions from council members? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on Monday, June 7, 2021, and to continue the action on the item to the June 15, 2021 City Council meeting?
Some of them.
So...
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on June 7 and continue the action on the item to the June 15, 2021 City Council meeting. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, on the motion as stated, Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Houghton?
Aye. The motion passes. The matter is to stay open for more, further public input. The public hearing will close at noon on Monday, June 7. And this will be continued for action by the council to the June 15, 2021 City Council meeting. Thank you, everybody, for appearing and providing the testimony for the record in this matter. And we'll take it up again at our second meeting in June. Next matter is the Resolution 2021-45, which is a potential approval of a preliminary plat with variances, 209 Mini-Haha Boulevard. And Director Teague has this matter as well. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this property is located adjacent to Arden Park, south of 52nd Street. Here's a look at the current property and note that it's quite oversized compared to adjacent properties around it. Here's an aerial shot. You can see Arden Park to the west. It's a very treed lot, as you can see. So this property was originally platted as two lots. You can see the two are here back in 1922. This is a 1946 survey that shows the, the original house was built on Lot 40. Over time, they did, the two lots were combined and they built in addition to the home to the south that crossed that lot line. So what the applicant is proposing is to tear down that existing home and essentially re-establish that original plat. But here's a look at the, the proposed building pads. Note that access to the southern lot would come off Mini-Haha Boulevard and access to the north lot would come off the alley located to the east. The applicant did a really nice job meeting with neighbors, working out issues. Want to point out that they're proposing, part of the concerns that were expressed from residents to the east were in regard to the existing tree cover. So the applicant is proposing to establish a preservation easement that would preserve these trees. They would eliminate some of the scrub trees and then plant some new trees and establish a permanent easement in this location and this location here to preserve some of those views from residents to the east. The applicant did run the median lot size of all properties within 500 feet. This is a look at that diagram. And note that the median here came out at 70 feet wide. So the lots to the south were all platted as part of the same subdivision and these are all 60-foot wide lots as they were originally platted. But the lots to the north within a different plat were much wider. So that's really the explanation for the 70-foot wide median. And also because some of those lots to the south have also been combined. So some of those lots further south are wider. But what's requested here is a subdivision preliminary and final plat with lot width variances from 75 feet to 60 feet for both lots. All other, you know, the lot area and lot depth would be code compliant. This is a graphic that I typically show with any of the subdivisions like this. It's really just to demonstrate how the city and the council over the years has been, they've approved some and denied some. But the council and planning commission really takes a look at the individual area and bases the decision on the immediate area. So again, we have approved some and denied some. So the primary issue are the findings for the variance for that lot width net. Staff and the planning commission believe that they are. The planning commission is also recommending approval here. So with the exception of the lot width, all other code requirements are met. The proposal re-establishes the original plat. Practical difficulty is due to the fact that the previous owner didn't develop the lot as was originally platted and the lots were combined. The existing lot is nearly double the size of the immediate lots around it. We believe they're reasonable in that context. The lots to the north face 52nd Street, so that adjacent lot to the north, those are rear yards. So we believe that the proposed subdivision would result in two lots that are more characteristic of the immediate lots. We did receive a couple of responses on Better Together. There was a concern over increased traffic, traffic from the park to the west, concern with tree removals, and a concern about others making similar requests. I did receive a phone call today from a Todd Croft who lives to the east across the alley at 5204 Halifax. He indicated that he, he will try to phone in this evening, but he is traveling. But he did want to state that he does support the project and complimented the applicant for working with the neighborhood and to establish those easements. So with that, I will close. And again, the council is asked to close the public hearing June 7 at noon and continue to June 15. With that, I can stop for questions. And the applicant, Scott Bousen, is here for a very short presentation as well.
All right, very good. Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Anyone? Okay. Mr. Bousen, thanks for being with us this evening. And I think Director Teague has told you that you should take about 10 minutes to make a presentation to the council and explain in your own words what you have in mind here. Welcome. You might be on mute, Mr. Bousen.
How's that?
It's better.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I really appreciate the opportunity and you taking the time to consider this subdivision. I'm Scott Bousen with Great Neighbored Homes. I live at 4121 West 50th Street. I also lived about a block from Arden Park and raised all our kids there and they played in the, the previous version of the park. It's obviously quite a different park now, but we really enjoyed that and we really appreciate the, the character of that, that unique neighborhood. So I've got a brief presentation here that I can share on my screen. Get that to come up here. Can you see that?
We can, if you enlarge it so we can see it better, that would be helpful in presentation motives.
How's that?
Wisely said.
Can you see that?
That's good, we can see that.
Great. So this is the narrative that I submitted in the packet that we presented to the planning commission. The mission of our company, Great Neighbored Homes, has always been to design and build new homes for families that fit well into the character of the existing neighborhood. We built several homes nearby, two specifically on Mini-Haw Boulevard, a few houses down, and many others on Halifax, Arden, Bruce, Juanita, and Indianola. And our office is nearby 50th and France, and we've lived in this neighborhood for 25 years. And we purchased 5209 Mini-Haw because we really want to make sure the development of that property is done in the way which respects the character of Arden Park. Here's just two examples of homes we built nearby on Halifax. And you can see that we really tried to get them to scale well with the adjacent homes. Carrie already talked about the, the original plat of being two lots. Sorry about that. And the homeowner did the addition across the south lot that you see here on another plat. And here's the current view of the property from Arden Park. So you can see it's quite a wide frontage on there, quite a bit wider than the 120-foot perpendicular dimension. And here's a recent summer view, it's quite overgrown. And Mini-Haw, 5209 Mini-Haw is in poor condition, has been vacant for some time. The neighborhood's very anxious for something to happen here. You know, it is true, we could build one large, more, large, more expensive home on the existing 120-foot lot. However, we feel that subdividing this property into the original plat and build two new homes would be a better fit for this section of the block and result in a more balanced streetscape on Mini-Haw Boulevard. And it'll continue the, there's a curving sequential staggering of the homes that exist today. And right now, it's sort of a big hole in that sequential sequence. And we feel this will provide a more blended and harmonious streetscape than one larger home on the section of the block. Of the 13 homes on Mini-Haw Boulevard, seven of the homes are all on 60-foot lots and six of those 60-foot lot homes are on the north section of the block where we are proposing the subdivision. Here's a photo of the four homes, homes to the south of 5209. So you can see the 60-foot lot sequential staggering of homes. And here's the photo of the two homes to the north of 5209. You can see one's kind of obliterated by a tree, but they're both approximately 60-foot lots to the north. And then I think Carrie referred to this, too, but on the 5200 and 5300 block of... And then I think Kerry referred to this too, but on the 5200 and 5300 block of in Minnehaha Boulevard and Halifax, 40 of the 40 homes are on 60 foot lots and a total of 47 of 60 homes on the two blocks are on 60 foot lots. So it was really platted to be 60 foot lot homes. In addition, the two smaller lot homes would, would limit the height of the new homes to 30 feet. Whereby if we built one larger home on a 40 foot lot, it could go up to 40 feet high. But we just feel it would be a much better fit and would create a new opportunity to welcome two new families to Edina.
Did we lose Mr. Bouson? Yeah, his internet connection went bad. Mr. Bouson, if you, Bouson, if you can hear me, we're waiting for you to come back. There, you're back. We lost you there momentarily.
Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that. Little technical difficulty there. Let me pull that up again here. So I was saying, we held several neighbor meetings in February. We had meetings in our office on the site and then I met individually with all adjacent, all eight adjacent neighbors on the site. And then we got, we had good attendance and received a lot of very direct feedback of how to best develop the site. And here is a little section of, these are all eight adjacent property owners and their concerns. The concerns of the people on Minnehaha Boulevard was, was traffic. We originally were proposing two driveways on Minnehaha. And also the neighbors at 5205 Minnehaha and 4207 52nd were concerned about their views in front of the lots there. The adjacent, the neighbor at 42152nd was concerned about tree removal and drainage on his property. And then the three neighbors on Halifax that are adjacent were concerned about, again, having traffic on the alley and also the trees. And then 5217, this all was this concern of they wanted to see if we could maintain some kind of a fence there for their dog. So based on the feedback, we adjusted our, our plan. And we decided to first of all, balance the driveway accesses. So we put one driveway on Minnehaha and one on the alley. So that was a better balance than having two driveways on Minnehaha Boulevard. And then to maintain the existing forested views, we, we put the easement in place that Kerry referred to. I had a neighbor here show me her view out of the, her window on Halifax. You can, you can see those trees that she was concerned about there. So those are the trees that are on the preservation easement. And then to maintain the views of the neighbors on 52nd, here's I visited with Ms. Oddly on 52nd. And here you can see her view in front of our property over to the park there. So what we did with her is we agreed to have our setback pulled back on our, our plat to maintain her views of Arden Park. And then we, then our, we have an engineered stormwater plan we put in place to manage the water to not increase flow onto neighbors. So the proposed plat that you see reflects all these changes based on the neighbor, neighbor feedback there. And I think from the subsequent feedback I got, people are pleased with the, the proposed plat that we did. Here's the view again of the front of 5209 to the neighbors' backyards on 52nd, how they kind of look through the front of our property there. Kerry referred to the area study that we did there that you've already seen. And the, the practical difficulties or the, the findings for the variance Kerry has also referred to, you know, that we meet the the four criteria of what's required for a variance. And there's just a few other items to consider. The two lots we're proposing here will not only be similar in size to the lots in the immediate vicinity, but will be the largest lots of any recently approved subdivision in Edina. Because of the neat curved section of the block, the lot frontage will actually be approximately 71 feet wide. So the curved nature of the block, these will actually look larger than 60 feet. Most previous subdivisions required two variances, whereas we're only seeking one. And the last item, there's a non-existing easement that shows up on the original survey that we took care of with a county that doesn't require any kind of a, a vacation. So we took care of that with the recording office on there. And with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Bouson from council members? Anyone? Mr. Bouson, would you speak a little bit to the, how you intend to orient, maybe the site plan you might have that, you know, how you would orient the house that you'd access off the alley? And how you'd orient the house that is accessed off Minnehaha Boulevard, just so I can understand that a little bit better?
Sure. Yeah. If you look at the, if Kerry can put up the, the plat here again, if he doesn't mind. He's got that or I could find it here too. So if you look at the, here's a, here's a proposed site plan. So you can see here how on the north lot, the driveway is on the south portion of the north lot access in the alley. Can you see that?
Oh.
Maybe you can blow it up just a bit. Kerry. So you see the, see the north lot there? So there's a driveway here.
Okay.
And then we, we put that driveway there for two reasons. A, to keep it away from any driveways on Halifax. And then that was the path of least resistance for the tree, any tree removal. And then on the south lot.
And then how would that house be oriented?
So that house would face Arden Park. So it'd face the west. Both homes would face Minnehaha Boulevard.
So the people on 52nd would see the side of the house?
Correct.
Okay.
And those homes are further back because the rear yard setbacks are greater than if those, the sides of those homes were abutting our property.
And then the existing curb cut on Minnehaha Boulevard is actually over on the portion of the property where you would now access that portion of the property if it were approved for subdivision from the alley. And so you'd have another new curb cut for the lot two?
Yeah, lot two would be on the south end of the lot. We wanted to get that away from the playground area. With the improvements in the park, most of the people are parking at the playground. They're parking more to the north. So we wanted to pull that driveway as far south as we could. And again, it was the path of least resistance to minimize tree removal. Again, there's some large trees on the north part of the, of the south lot. And that was the best way to minimize tree removal.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah. The couple, the family to the south of Bennetts, I spoke with them about that and they liked the fact that we were working to minimize the tree removal in the front yard.
Okay. So how close would this proposed new driveway for lot two be to the driveway for the family to the south on lot three B or wherever it is, 30?
Yeah, that's the Bennetts there. I got it. Yeah, the Bennetts prop, their, their driveway is about, I'd say it's about six feet away from the lot line. And our driveway is approximately eight, so I'd say about 14 feet.
Okay. All right. That just helps me with orientation.
Sure.
Yeah, it looked like from your bubble, your bubble aerial here that those driveways would be fairly close to each other, which wouldn't necessarily be unusual for the broader neighborhood.
Yeah, it just seemed to be the best position for, you know, minimizing traffic with the playground and then minimizing tree removal.
Okay. All right. Understood. Did that trigger any questions from council members? Otherwise we'll open it up for public testimony. Okay. I'm not hearing anything. So we'll now hear from any residents who would like to provide testimony in this matter. Remember that number is 800-374-0221 and the conference ID is 1396473, 1396473. An operator will get your name and address and then they'll put you in the queue. You'll press star one and Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council and you'll have three minutes. So Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue that wishes to speak with regard to this proposed subdivision?
Currently I have two people on the call, but neither are indicating a desire to speak. Again, if you'd like to speak in this public hearing, press star or the asterisk symbol, then the number one on your telephone keypad that will get you in the queue to speak. They could be on the call for a, a future public hearing too. So I would recommend as we wait for people to call in or indicate they'd like to speak, that we wait a minute or so since there is a delay in the broadcast. My clock shows that it's 8:42. I'll come back to you when I have a speaker or 8:43, whichever comes first.
Thank you.
It is now 8:43 and neither of my callers are indicating a desire to speak. So I think it's safe for you to move forward with the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Council members, while we were waiting for any public testimony, was there anything that came to mind? If not, I'll entertain a motion with respect to this resolution 2021-45, which is a request for a preliminary plat with variances for the property located at 5209 Minnehaha Boulevard to close the public hearing on this matter at, on Monday at noon, June 7th, 2021, and continue the action on the item to the June 15th, 2021 city council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Seconds.
Member Staunton, seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Clerk Allison with, with respect to the motion as stated.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Jackson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pierce.
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Eric Hovland.
Hi. The motion as stated is approved. This matter will be continued for public testimony until noon on Monday, June 7th, and then the council will take it up at its regularly scheduled meeting on June 15th, 2021. Thank you, Mr. Bouson for being with us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll move on to our last public hearing matter, which is an appeal on a sign variance for monument signage, I think both at the ground level and also on the building involving 7101 and 7201 Metro Boulevard. And Emily Botticker, our assistant city planner, has this matter for us. Ms. Botticker, welcome.
Yes. Thank you. Mayor and members of the city council, tonight, the city council is asked to give an appeal for sign variances at 7101 and 7201 Metro Boulevard, which were both denied by the planning commission at their May 12th meeting.
Boy, Ms. Botticker, your, your, your audio is really echoey.
Okay. Is this any better?
Seems better.
Okay. The applicant is asking for multiple sign variances. One is for the height of the proposed monument signs adjacent to Ohio 100. And one, one of those proposed monument signs would be on the 7101 Metro Boulevard property and one would be on the 7201 Metro Boulevard property. The applicant is also requesting a variance from the allowable square footage of wall signs at 7201 Metro Boulevard. The applicant is requesting that the three allowable wall signs be up to 150 square feet. The proposed wall signs are on the north, east and south elevations of the 7201 Metro Boulevard building. In the Plan Office District, there is an allowable one sign per building per frontage and one freestanding sign per frontage. Between those two signs, there's 120 square feet total that is allowed with no individual sign being greater than 80 square feet. The maximum height for monument signs in the Plan Office District is eight feet. The applicant is proposing on the left-hand side, the two monument signs be 20 feet tall. One on the 7101 Metro Boulevard property and one on the 7201 Metro Boulevard property. You can see on the left-hand side, those are the proposed signs in those locations. On the right-hand side of your screen, the three red boxes represent the proposed square footage for the wall signs on the 7201 Metro Boulevard building. The applicant doesn't have specific tenants for the signs, so they're showing an allowable square footage as opposed to a specific sign. They have provided an example that you can see here that shows an example of the size and scale of what they're proposing. At the planning commission meeting, staff recommended approval of the sign variances and felt that the variance criteria were met based on the size and scale of the building. Staff felt that it wouldn't alter the character of the neighborhood and that there were practical difficulties with the site. The planning commission denied the variance five to four and felt that the sign was out of the character of the neighborhood. It was too much of an ask over what is allowed and the application where the signs didn't show enough detail. So tonight, the applicants are requesting that the city council consider their appeal of the denial of the sign variances at 7101 and 7201 Metro Boulevard. City council is asked to close the public hearing Monday, June 7th and continue this item to June 15th. And with that, I can stand for any questions. David Little and Stephen Hemrich from HGA are on the call as well as property owner Eric Anderson. And they're also available to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, Mr. Little or Mr. Hemrich, would you want to make any kind of presentation to the council?
This is a good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Eric Anderson and I'm a principal with City Center Realty Partners. We acquired the former Regis buildings.
Mr. Anderson, I want to give your address, please, your home address?
My home address is 750 South Second Street in Minneapolis. I was a 20-plus year resident of Edina and recently moved to downtown Minneapolis. We, we acquired the former Regis buildings at 7101, 7151 and 7201 Metro Boulevard in 2019. Regis leased back a portion of the space through May of 2020 and then they vacated the property for a different building in Minneapolis. And we spent the last year renovating the property and preparing it for use as a multi-tenanted office building. These buildings had been occupied for over the last over 40 years by a single tenant, first AT&amp;T and then Regis. And for those uses, signage requirements were minimal because again, there was only a single tenant in the entire project. And I don't know that we, you know, the, the conversion from single tenant to multi-tenant is really the reason for the signage variance request. And I'm not sure that we made that point clearly enough in our presentation before the planning commission. We've unfortunately lost a couple of potential tenants in the building and signage has been pointed out as one of the reasons that chose to go to office buildings in either Bloomington or Eden Prairie. And approval of these sign variances will help us attract potential city, uh, tenants to the city of Edina and return this building to a fully occupied project. I appreciate your taking the time to listen. I have, as was mentioned, my architects, David Little and Steve Hemrich available, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me as well.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That was helpful. Mr. Little or Mr. Hemrich, any comment you wish to make as the designers of the signage?
Yes, please. My name is David Little and I'm a principal at HGA Architects in Minneapolis. I am a St. Louis Park resident. The two things I'd like to add to what Eric just laid out. I think the illustration of the example facade sign that Emily posted shows that what we're proposing is really in scale with the building. And know that one of the challenges that she mentioned that is site-specific is that this property is along Highway 100. This is not a residential neighborhood. The scale, the speed that vehicles are traveling past it demand a little different size or height to the signs simply to be seen. Like Eric said, this was a single-tenant building for some time and now is nine stories that we need to lease out and that likely will not be just one tenant. It's going to be multiple tenants moving into this building. And one of the things that will attract tenants to this property is visibility. That's one of the reasons you would want to move to the Highway 100 corridor. So having a sign on top of the building that's legible, which I would contend this example that these dimensions are legible, given the height of the building, and having a monument sign that's, you know, more than eight feet so that you can see it from the highway. Those are important elements in order to get tenants to even walk through the building, let alone sign a lease and move to Edina. With that, I'm again happy to answer any questions. Really respect the planning commission's deliberation and staff's vote of endorsement. And like they said, it was a 5-4 vote, very close, so.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Council members have questions? Councilmember Staunton and Councilmember Jackson?
So Emily or maybe Carrie, I'm having deja vu. It seems like we did assign variance like this on one of the buildings in the area maybe five or six years ago. Am I imagining that or?
Oh, that's right.
No, that's right. We did. Further south.
Yes, I believe you're thinking of the SunOpta.
Yes. SunOpta.
Yep, they, they had some extra wall signage that was where they needed it.
And how does this compare to that situation?
Um, that I'm not sure how that compares. Emily, have you?
I don't have specifics on that variance.
Well, and if you can't right now, that's fine, but it's a question to raise and maybe bring back to us at some point because I, it sounds really familiar compared to that one, so.
Yeah, I believe it was just wall signage for that one. This one, there's the monument signs in addition, but, but we'll have that for the next time.
Okay, thank you.
Conceptually, they're very similar.
Okay.
Yeah, but you're right, Director Teague. It was wall signage because it's a multi-tenant building. But they were the predominant tenant, I think. All right. Other questions? Member Jackson had one, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is for Ms. Bottiker. I'm curious about the monument sign. So first of all, we're just, this was one variance for all the signs in question. Is that correct?
Two separate variance requests, one being the height of the monument signs. Being 20 feet, monument signs that are proposed adjacent to Highway 100. The second being the size of the building signage at the 7201 building.
Okay, so the monument is on 100 then? It's not on Metro Boulevard?
Correct. It's the two monuments that are adjacent to Highway 100. One on the 7101 property and one on the 7201 property.
Okay, so when we're talking about height, that's not from the ground up 20 feet. It's, it's the, the dimension of the sign itself. So it would be on top of the building like the picture is signed, is, was shown. Is that correct?
No, for the height, it would be, I could pull up the drawings here again. The height is measured from the ground to the top of the sign.
Is there anything in the neighborhood that's like that? Would this be unique?
No. What is it? The Pentagon South property? Those are, those properties are zoned, or the signage allowance is similar to the Planned Commercial Districts. And those by, the code allows up to signs that are 20 feet tall for monument signage. So you can see on the left-hand of the side of the screen here, the 20 feet is measured from the bottom of the sign and from grade to the top of the sign.
Okay, and that would be a long Highway 100, not a long Metro Boulevard?
Yep, the two red circles are the locations of those two signs.
Okay.
You could see, I kind of took a Google Street View image of the building. You can see there's a little bit of grade change and you can see that it's a same-regius sign on the building as well.
Okay. So there's separate variances. One is for the, the name at the top of the building and the other is for the monument signs.
Yep.
Okay.
Member Jackson, I think if you drive along that section of Highway 100 from 70th down to the 494, you'll see quite a few quite a bit of wall signage on those buildings there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Including not just SunOpta, but remember International Dairy Queen was down there at one time too and
Right.
Oh, but their signage was there and predominant. Okay.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing matter. So let's hear from any residents who'd like to provide testimony in this case. And you can call 800-374-0221. Conference ID again, 1396473. 1396473. An operator will ask you your name and street address. You get in the queue, you press star one, and Director Bennerott will bring you in in front of the council, and you'll have three minutes. Director Bennerott, anyone in the queue?
I still have two people on the line. Neither are indicating a desire to speak at this time. As a reminder to those on the call, if you'd like to speak to this public hearing matter, please press star or the asterisk key, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That will get you in the queue to speak. Please be careful not to confuse it with the hashtag or pound symbol. That will actually take you out of the queue to speak. Again, that's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. Because it's possible, these people are just listening and not intending to speak and because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I would like to wait a minute or so before moving on with the agenda. My clock shows that it's 8:59. I'll come back to you at nine o'clock or when I have a caller, whichever is first. It is now nine o'clock and I still don't have anyone in the queue, so I think it's safe for you to move on.
All right, thank you, Director Bennerott. Is there a council member who wishes to make a motion to adopt, make a motion with regard to a resolution 2021-47, which was an appeal for sign variances for monument and wall sign height and size at 7101 and 7201 Metro Boulevard to close the public hearing in this matter at noon on Monday, June 7, and continue the action on the item to the June 15, 2021 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce. Supporting the motion as stated. Any further discussion? Roll call please. Ms. Ellison, with respect to the motion as stated.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Havelin.
Aye. The motion's approved. This matter with regard to a variance appeal on the wall and monument signage is continued to Monday, continued, the public hearing, excuse me, is continued to noon on Monday, June 7, and we'll continue the action on the item to our June 15, 2021 city council meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Yep, thanks, everybody. And then we're on now to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. More interesting work ahead of us here this evening. And the first matter we have here, Chris Acker has, and this is a matter that we heard a couple of weeks ago. It's Resolution 2021-40, denying the appeal request for reasonable accommodation at 6222 Braverman Circle. So the motion that's requested is to approve Resolution 2021 for denying the appeal request for reasonable accommodation is the way the staff has the language worded. Planner Acker, would you want to present, what you want to present from a staff standpoint?
Yes, briefly. Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. Resolution number 2021-40 is before you to deny an appeal of a request denied by the planning commission on April 14 to increase residential occupancy in an existing group home beyond the maximum allowed by state statute. The city council has been asked to consider an appeal of a variance request from Scott Hemmenway, owner of the Geneva Suites located at 6222 Braverman Circle for reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing Amendments Act to increase residential occupancy from the permitted six residents by state statute to 10 residents in a group home facility. Geneva Suites has a housing with services certificate from the Minnesota Department of Health offering assisted living services and dementia program through an agreement with a licensed home care provider. A public hearing was held by the city council on May 18 with the hearing closed for additional comment on May 26 at noon. There were 16 contributors who submitted comments on Better Together Edina with split opinions on the current group home operation. The applicant and property owner, Mr. Scott Hemmenway and Mr. Bill Griffith, Mr. Hemmenway's attorney, are on hand, listening in on the call. The council has any additional questions for them. And with that, I will hand the matter back to the city council for discussion and action.
Thank you, Ms. Acker. Been thinking about this matter a bit and we've got some carefully crafted resolution, or a carefully crafted resolution here that supports the denial of the request. Let me ask, does any council member support the granting of the requested accommodation to increase occupancy from six residents to 10 residents? All right, I, I think the way this resolution's been crafted, the next thing we want to do is discuss the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution number 2021-40, which denies a request for reasonable accommodation to increase current resident occupancy from permitted six residents by state statutes to 10 for a care services group home? Geneva Suites residence 6222 Braverman Circle.
So moved.
Member Anderson moves?
Second. I'll second.
Member Jackson, seconds. Any further discussion with regard to the resolution? Member Staunton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering. I'm looking at the resolution, trying to see if there's any any mention, and maybe Ms. Acker can help us with this. Any mention of the fact that this is a cul-de-sac street? And whether that factors into the, you know, I understand this is a very fact-sensitive, case-by-case kind of analysis, and one of the things that strikes me is that not being a through street ends up creating more traffic issues with more volume. Is that part of the resolution at all?
It can certainly be emphasized.
Yeah, I just wonder if that, that adds an extra layer of, of kind of factual nuance to this situation. It strikes me that it makes it more complex from a kind of residential neighborhood perspective to not have a through street here and it's an end of a cul-de-sac and that complicates the the congestion and vehicle parking and arrangement issues even more.
I'm looking, Member Staunton, at page three of the resolution. Talks about parking needs, vehicle trips. Parking plan. Wonder if they could.
Maybe in that third bullet on, on page three, just add something about the fact that, you know, so you've got the vehicles that are coming in and out and they're coming in and out with only one way to exit the neighborhood. Enter and exit the neighborhood.
How about that first bullet where it says the area is zoned R1? Neighborhood is a single-family or single-dwelling residential for at least a half a mile to one mile each in every direction. And the maybe put in the address, and 6222 Braverman Circle is located in a cul-de-sac with one, with only one point of ingress and egress.
Yeah. I just think that, for me, that's an extra factor in this analysis.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Jackson?
Doesn't that also limit the amount of on-street parking for any of the homes because it's curved?
You mean from a practical standpoint or a legal standpoint? What, what are you thinking?
Well, so the ingress and egress carries more weight legally than the, the fact that there's just not a lot of on-street parking available. I don't know if that, if that carries weight or not.
Yeah, I, I think it's all part of the factual scenario here that we've got a you know, this isn't a through street where there's multiple points of access and more traditional parking. There's there's scarcity of parking and, and access in and out. And so having more traffic and more vehicles even is, creates a more severe situation than in a normal setting.
Yeah, that, that covers it. Thank you.
Give me a moment here. So to that, that single, first bullet, I would say, on the top of page three, where it says this area is zoned R1, single dwelling unit district. The neighborhood is a single-family or single-dwelling residential for at least one half mile to one mile in every direction with 6222 Braverman Circle located in a cul-de-sac with only one point of ingress or egress, creating more parking challenges than on a normal through street? Does that accomplish what we want to accomplish here?
More parking and traffic issues than in a normal through street.
More parking and traffic challenges or issues?
Yeah, that works for me. Thanks.
Than on a, than on a normal through street? So I'll take that as a friendly amendment. Is that, I remember. Remember, who, Member Jackson was the seconder? Are you comfortable with that as a friendly amendment play?
I am.
Okay. All right, does everybody follow what we did there? All right. Uh, with respect to the resolution as, uh, modified by friendly amendment from Member Staunton and Member Jackson, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the adoption of the resolution as modified by Members Staunton and Jackson.
Councilmember Pierce.
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Mayor Houghlin.
Aye. The, uh, motion, uh, the resolution is adopted as stated, denying the request for reasonable accommodation, increase the current resident occupancy count from six residents to, uh, 10 residents for the Geneva Suites, uh, facility at 6222 Braverman Circle. All right. Next matter we have is, um, another matter we had in public hearing a couple of weeks ago, and that is Resolution 2021-41 and Ordinance 2021-03, which is a potential preliminary rezoning from PCD1 and APD to PUD at 4971 Nav. But we all know as the, uh, Perkins Restaurant site, uh, for some reason, I don't know if it's financial-related, Perkins is determined, or the owner of that property is determined to, um, sell that property. The city does not own that property, never did own it. We don't have control over it. This is a, a market rate decision. And, um, I wanted to go to, uh, council members now to to, um, discuss this matter further, um, as to the requests that are being made here. Uh, does there a preliminary presentation that we need to make here? Director Teague, is there anything further that you wanted to add before we talk about the various resolutions? I think your input would be helpful.
Uh, yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as mentioned, you are asked to, uh, take action on this redevelopment proposal. So the proposal is to tear down that Perkins and the office building and build a seven-story, 196-unit apartment with a 3,700-square-foot restaurant. 10% of the units would be for affordable housing. Included in your packet are options for approval and denial. This is one of those projects where the city does have complete discretion to approve or deny. Uh, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval here. The planning commission vote was seven to one. Uh, so that's the recommendation from staff, um, and planning commission, subject to those findings and conditions that are outlined in the approving resolution. I wanted to mention that at the last meeting, uh, the applicant, Mr. Walton, had offered to eliminate the restaurant out of the project to address some of those traffic concerns that we heard a lot about, uh, from the neighborhood. Um, if you eliminate the restaurant here, the, uh, the, the solely residential development would actually generate less traffic than the existing Perkins Restaurant and Office. We do have Mr. Terhart here on the call, and it can answer any questions, uh, that you may have in regard to the traffic study. Um, also, Mr. Walton has indicated that he could, they could pull the building to the south to increase a setback on Eden. Right now, it's, the plans show about a five-foot setback. Um, they could shift that. So it's about an 11-foot setback to try to, to, uh, address some of those height issues for the single-family homes to the north. Um, the council also, over the last couple of weeks, had asked for a comparison of some of the, uh, recent projects that have been proposed in regard to height. So again, this project, the building height is seven stories and 76 feet tall. The Nolan Maines project that was recently built down in the 50th and France area is six stories and 75 feet tall, but somewhat similar in height, one less story. The Avador to the west across Highway 100 is six stories and 70 feet. The Lorient up at 40, uh, uh, in the 44th and France area is four stories and 50 feet. So again, the Perkins, uh, this site, uh, the building proposed is seven feet, or seven stories and 76 feet, uh, in height. There was, um, also, there were some questions about the height of the Perkins flagpole. Staff did a couple of measurements, and it's between 63 and 66 feet height. So just like kind of a, a comparison there. Um, so in conclusion, if the council does approve the rezoning, this is a first reading of the ordinance. They would have to come back for final approval, subject to any conditions this council may have. And also that this is a PUD, so the only, uh, use that could be built within the PUD is the building that's proposed. Um, there was a lot of better together comments. I believe that last total was over 150. Uh, there are more for the, there are more against the project than for it. Again, the biggest concerns being height, traffic, and density. Um, some of the likes included, uh, the affordable housing, the site needs redevelopment, distance from single-family home, uh, and the architecture. So with that, I will stop there. Again, the development team is here to answer any questions, as well as staff and Mr. Terhart.
All right. Thank you, Director Teague. My understanding is that a couple of our colleagues have, uh, some short PowerPoint presentations they'd like to make in conjunction with their comments before we we move on anything. Uh, both Member Jackson and Member Anderson, I think, have put some things together for staff. Uh, and I don't know if those are ready for presentation or not. Um, or Member Anderson or Member Jackson? Either one of you care to go first? Or am I incorrect on that assumption or that information?
I, I do have a short PowerPoint presentation. Um, I don't know, Member Anderson, do you want to go first? Go ahead.
Good. Okay, thank you. Um, well, I, I, uh, just in summary, in summary, uh, we're voting tonight on approving the seven-story, 196-unit multifamily and restaurant. I don't have any clarity at this moment. Are we pulling the restaurant out or leaving it in? That makes a difference, I guess, doesn't it? We're not decided on that. Okay. In any event, um, so, uh, Mr. Walton, I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge you and your design team, uh, BKV. It's a very attractive design. It's complimentary to City Hall. And, um, I also just want to mention that your testimony was very straightforward, and, um, your request, your pending request for public support on your project, its amount and length of time was, um, I appreciate your candor. So, you know, thank you for that. When we consider rezoning, we're actually once again trying to find the balance between very necessary growth, which widens our tax base and creates opportunity, and continuing to observe and support feel and quality of life that has made our towns very attractive for so long. Both of those are important. Um, as mentioned, residents have been very forthcoming in offering their views on several matters relative to the potential project. So I'd like to comment on just a couple of these concerns. One that, um, has my attention, uh, there is a, an astute farmer-planning commissioner, which, uh, who went to great detail in mentioning safety standards relative to inadequate traffic controls, insufficient sidewalks along France East to 100, and has raised the question of the site being outside possible areas of change as shown in chapter three of the comp plan. She also expresses concern relative to Frank Tupe Park, the Cahill School, and the side of the Grange being marginalized or diminished. Um, she observes that the, the Yancey family's contributions to the city have not been properly noted at that site. So, to me, anyway, it's not obvious that a comp plan amendment of any kind needs to be considered, but her suggestion that the Historic Preservation Board consider the site if development progresses, I believe, is spot on. A Sunny Slope resident commented on their observation of high vacancy rates in various buildings in the marketplace, referencing saturation. I can report that CoStar, which is the preeminent commercial real estate source, projects a 25% vacancy rate in the four- and five-star unit category as the Barrow and the Millennium at 66th and Zertz as these begin to deliver units this year. That report does not consider the proposed 240 units at 70th and France or this project, which are both in the same class. Still, the biggest expressed concern has clearly been traffic. I spent time in the last several days refamiliarizing with the 2012 Grand View Framework, which was chaired by Councilmember Staunton. I'm losing my voice here. I'm still, um, I'm struggling with, uh, those voice issues still, uh, which was chaired by Councilmember Staunton, as well as the 2016 traffic study. Both of those community-involved projects inform us as to what might be possible in the district. References to code-based design or farm-based code are numerous. Excuse me.
Take your time, Member Anderson.
Yeah, it's, um, when I speak at length, uh, the voice still fades. Could be that my voiceover career has ended, as well as firm guidance on infrastructure improvements. Excuse me, to allow further development. With recent enacted improvements funded by the Grand View Tiff District, we began to see a portion of those improvements take place. This is whole cloth, is the point I'm trying to make here. So what do we have to work with when we take a look at the impact on the district and, and, uh, what our approach can be here? So I would like to share a screen to visualize that. Um, and I also want to thank the BKV group again. Um, there, some of their slides adapted particularly well. Uh, Director Benarada, I wonder if you could pull that up rather than try to teach an old drug a new trick? Um, so, uh, slide number one is just that we see the project and its position in the district. The next slide, which would be three, I believe, would, uh, the wrong way here. Okay, then, I think, uh, the next slide. There you go. The next slide shows the, uh, to slide three. Can I control it from here? No, or we're really kind of getting out of sync here. We can go to slide three, please. It's four. Need three. Thank you. Uh, that slide shows the potential future of the district. This is the master plan developed in the 2012 transportation study. Next. Slide four, uh, we consider the S E H comprehensive study that was finalized in November 2020. That study, uh, the study areas are primarily Eden Avenue, Arcadia and Normandale Road, as well as the 100 West Ramp accessed by 50th and Vernon Avenue. So the primary goals of this study are to analyze removing the southbound Free Right Turn at Vernon and the impact of closing the southbound 100 access from Eden as well as the roundabout at Arcadia and Eden. Uh, the next slide, I think, shows the results or shows the, the project areas that were discussed in that traffic study. So the areas at work here, the lower screen is the, uh, southbound Eden Ramp, which, uh, we think will close. Um, and then, of course, the, uh, the southbound ramp accessible from Vernon. So, um, again, from the S H E study, if we go to the next slide, we can see the chart. And what you'll notice in the bottom right corner there is, uh, a, uh, a third of a point of average linear annual growth, which really means that, uh, the annual growth in that area is just under 1% in the study area every three years. Now, there's no reference to specific developments or potential for them, but that question could be answered, I suppose, independently over time. Um, we have next the, uh, the StanTech study. Uh, we can just move to the next slide from that. Thank you. Um, and I think that the, the key element here is really just that as the property is currently proposed, we have, uh, 1190 additional trips, uh, into the area. And, uh, that also, uh, doesn't really show, uh, or discuss development that is either being planned or can readily occur in the area. So number nine, I think, is, is of interest. What you're seeing right here is you're seeing an overview of Clayton, Missouri, which is the county seat of St. Louis County. Um, the, the slide on the left is from 1968. And it's really kind of interesting because, um, in 1968, this is the county seat, of course, and differs from, uh, from us. But, uh, you'll see all the surface parking that they have here, which is an ongoing discussion as we consider virtually every project these days. The thing that, that is important to note here is that the planners in the 50s anticipated this as an area growth. And so the planning here developed, um, quite a few arterial accesses internally as well as the release points around there, around the, around the commercial area. You see, most of those are four lanes. And the two-lane areas, uh, actually, uh, uh, serve the individual buildings. As we move to the right, those are current conditions in the same area. Um, a lot of growth. And what they did there, of course, was take the parking underground and build on top of it. Now, they don't have significant traffic problems in this area, and one of the things that they did, if you look at the lower right-hand screen there, is they actually built another area for release from here and access to it called Forest Park Parkway. Um, so we're not a county seat, and our planners didn't anticipate uh, high levels of traffic and, and access difficulties of any kind. Um, they didn't anticipate it because that's not, that's not who we are. But that is, they knew who they were, so they went about it. Um, next slide, please. And so what this really does is just to, once again, uh, take a look at the site, and, and the reason that that could be important, I, I don't know if you can, uh, see my cursor on here? Is that, is that visible? Okay, so here's our, here's our site. And the thing that I, the, the point I want to make from taking a look at this is, is that our public work site here anticipates further development and probably in the relatively near future. We also have some other additional development sites and opportunities along in here. The next slide, if we just move to that, will show from the 2012 master plan, the proposed master plan, that as this would be built out, um, and this, of course, is the, is the access that, that we're discussing vacating, this would be the new northbound ramp, uh, uh, into Vernon. So this is the project location right here, the site location. And this, of course, the city hall is right here, and this would show two additional sites which could be gained by the northbound ramp being completed by Mendat and then, uh, uh, filling in that area there. So I think we're done with, with the slide presentation. Um, thank you for that, Director Benarada. Um, but in referencing the 2012 framework and the 2016 traffic study as trail guides, short-term, midterm, and long-term changes to the transportation network should coincide with increasing levels of density. So change is density, change is density. Each stage lays the groundwork for the next. If the Perkins site redevelops now outside of its current zoning and potential density, average density in the Grand View District might be relatively low at this point, but we know that more will follow. So for me, I think prior to rezoning approval, we have to consider this project a possible 90 units on the Farmer Public Work Site, the O L G expansion, and the inevitability of further substantive changes being proposed and occurring in the district. Farm-based design concepts, as mentioned in the 2012 framework, numerous references to farm-based design, which allow us to rethink the area and to consider what an appropriate level of development on the east side of 100 is. There are two reasons to reconfigure the ramps, to clean up the redundancies and to create new developable parcels. And we know that those proposals or any new proposals can only put more pressure on 50th and Vernon for access to 100. So I think we need to consider our own guidelines for safety in pedestrian, auto, and bike traffic, as well as measuring the impact on the immediate residential areas. To thoughtfully take that approach to the district seems best, and we have savvy, talented minds in engineering and zoning, should we choose to take that route. Last, and possibly as important as traffic issues of today and tomorrow, is the issue of rezoning to advance the proposal. There's a daily conversation about how expensive Edina real estate is. That's accurate in both residential and commercial areas. Homeowners understandably seek to protect their investment and enjoy it. Development industry considers many guidelines, many principles. Development industry considers many guidelines, many principles, in coming to decisions about sites to develop and what to do. One of them, of course, is that the site's worth what you can build on it. Less density, less return for the site owner. More density, better net proceeds. That's the way it works. So, in this instance, for instance, the site's estimated market value for taxes, taxes that are paid to the city at this time, is 3.1 million, although the acquisition price was something above that back in 2007. The developer has an option to acquire the site for considerably above that, which will be a very good return for the seller. So, the question is, could a similarly designed, lower-profile building work at this location? Of course. And while site cost is a factor, the mid-rise method of construction adds more expense, other factors in construction add more expense. So in the end, quibono, two benefits. So our councils vote tonight to rezonate P U D. Tonight benefits the site owner primarily, although it does allow the developer to execute his business model. In turn, the developer will request public support to bridge the expense gap in the farmer tax increment financing, primarily due to expenses of the site, partially due to the density and method of construction. The larger the project, the bigger the gap. That's the way it works. So, I would very much like to see this developer and design team bring a proposal forward to build to the scale our current zoning requires. They'd do a really good job, without question. But for me, given the traffic questions, the current infrastructure challenges, and really lack of clarity about future development, as well as facilities to support our growth and development, in, in both in the Southville District and in this area as we do so, our station number two is important. I can't support a rezoning at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think what I'll do, like Member Anderson did, is go through my whole presentation, my whole reasoning. At the end, I've got a short presentation that I'll ask Director Bennerat to help me with. But I kind of want to go through, I'll, I think it's useful to go through the whole list here. So, to me, it's very important to listen to people's input. That's super important, to understand where the community is at. So I looked at the Better Together site, where people who like the project, thought it's a well-thought-out design. A lot of people liked the idea of a restaurant taking the place of Perkins. It's an aesthetic upgrade, and it also creates affordable housing units. For those who oppose the project, I've got a, a list and some answers to some of their answers. One person was concerned about the stormwater runoff, and actually, this project will improve the stormwater, and we will clean it up before it re-enters the watershed, which is a big benefit to me. People were concerned about the noise from Highway 100. I think that's irrelevant to this project. The residents can currently petition to add a sound wall to their neighborhood, and I hope that they do, if this is a problem for them. The TIF will increase the neighborhood's taxes. We know that that's not how TIF works. The property will continue to pay the same rate of taxes before and after TIF financing. And it will be, when the TIF lifts, then the, the tax revenue will go up, but we won't lose any tax revenue by using TIF. There's an impact on the historic buildings, and I have a little bit more to say about that in my presentation. And it, the basic problem with all of this is, is the traffic. It's dangerous conditions for bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists, and that will be in my presentation. So as an analysis, I have to say, this project is really beautiful. It pulls from architectural cues of, cues of the surrounding area. Environmentally, it's a great asset. As I mentioned, it improves the stormwater runoff, and incorporates solar panels and a community garden on the roof. It increases the pervious surface area on the lot, which is very important as we look at global warming. And I, it's cited to make the most of the natural light in the neighboring properties. The window that comes between the two parts of the building, I just, I love the way it brings light into the courtyard. That's, that's just a spectacular amenity. I don't think the height is out of line with other projects that the city has approved. It, they, the developers taken special care to align with the Grand View Small Area Plan. This is a local developer with ties to the community, and that means a lot to me. They're reliable and, and care about what happens to Edina. The 10% of units at the deeper affordability level, 50% of AMI, is, is a, is a big benefit in my mind. And that leaves the traffic and safety concerns. A lot of people suggested, fix the traffic problems first, and then consider redevelopment. So, Director Bennerat, if you could pull up my presentation, I'll just tell you, the first page is a link to the traffic study, because I was looking at the video, or the pictures in the traffic study, and, and the numbers, and I looked at it over and over again, and I thought about it a long time. So that's just, I credit the picture, which is the basis of my very simplistic PowerPoint. So this is the picture I kept looking at. And you can see where the existing Perkins building is. And I just, I kept thinking about the traffic in this area. And you can see, and I can't do this on my computer, but where Dale Avenue is and dumps on to 50th. At first, I had a hard time finding Dale, and then I realized that the City Hall driveway is really just right across the street from Dale. And I, and I got to thinking, yes, thank you, about that. What if we can fix, we can't fix the traffic problem unless we redevelop the Perkins site? So if you could go to the next slide, please? This is the proposed on-ramp. You can see my fancy technology with the construction paper. But this is approximately where it would run through the existing site. So you can see, if we leave the Perkins site there, this off-ramp and on-ramp is not an option. If it does go in, though, you can see all the redundancies and Grange Road, and, and I just kept looking at this, going, well, what, what else could this look like? So we go to the next slide. What if we connected Wilson Road with Dale? And had it run across in front of City Hall there? And I asked Director Milner if this had been in the traffic study, and he said, nope, I've never heard this idea before. So in the plan that was done in 2016, and so, this is a unique idea, and that is to add a new street connecting Dale and Wilson Road. And then all of the pavement in between these two orange lines becomes open for redevelopment. So Director Bennerat, next slide. So we create this green space. I leave the historic buildings there, and this is just cut out of the paper and pasted on, so it's the same size. And, but suddenly, there's this big green space, and all of this land is owned by the public. So whether it's MINDOT, the county, or the city of Edina, and I believe it's a combination of those things, this is all public land. So none of this has to be redeveloped to add new traffic. It's, it's a very unusual situation in a fully-built city where you can create new land, but if we get rid of those on-ramps and turn the road from Grange Road into this new Dale slash Wilson, we suddenly have a great big new public space. So next slide. Of course, we have to replace the parking for City Hall, so I just moved the parking lot and plunked it down there. Beautiful engineers and architects will make it look better than this, but this is the same size parking lot as currently in front of City Hall. One of the concerns about the historic site was loss of places to park the buses. We can certainly accommodate those in a, in an increased or improved parking lot for the public. And then in the next slide, you can see there's a lot of green. And boom, there's room for a new fire station. So this is the Tracy Avenue Fire Station. It's actually a little bit larger than the scale of this picture, so it could be smaller than this. Oh, one thing I didn't mention is that at this new Dale Road intersection, could be a traffic-activated light, so that it would only be red on 50th when a fire engine wants to leave, or someone wants to leave the Sunny Slope neighborhood. But you could have a new light there, and they could, the neighbors there could get in and out. So, let's see. It's got room for the bus parking, a traffic-activated light, and most importantly, this new road would create safe routes to three schools. So if you go down Wilson Road, you've got Normandale, you've got South, Southview Middle School, and then Concord School. And so you could ride your bike safely on this new road and get to three schools. And safe routes to school is a really, really important principle to me. And so you've got this new public park possible, and all these amenities that could easily fit within there. But this wouldn't happen without the redevelopment of the Perkins. And so I think if we want to look at safety, it's, it's not going to be free to do this. But, to me, you've got this beautiful development with all these improved environmental things, beautiful use of the site, lovely architecture. I like the restaurant a lot. I think it brings people into the site and provides some community connection. But the safety and traffic problems, I would posit, cannot be solved unless we redevelop the Perkins site and open up this land. So that's why I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Jackson. Member Pierce, care to give us your thoughts?
Yep, it's Mr. Mayor. So, first, I, I will say, I appreciate my, both my colleagues, the thought that they put into their comments. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation, but I don't mind following either of you from, without, without my PowerPoint presentation. Regardless, I put a lot of thought into this. I would also echo, I felt like the, the development, from the first time we saw it, I thought it would be a beautiful structure for Edina. I felt like, you know, having something on the east side that was just over, across 100 would be awesome as well. I have engaged with a number of residents, as my colleagues have, and read lots of comments, very many emails, and I would say, a lot of people like the design. There are comments that people liked the affordable housing element, thought that the area needed an upgrade as well. And then, there are a number of people that like the restaurant. And I do have to give a shout-out to residents who, you know, they love the Perkins. In fact, my, my oldest, my daughter Olivia, who graduated, who's now at Northwestern, said she loved going to the Perkins as a high schooler, as a senior. So with that being said, I, one of the things that I try to pride myself on, I am on the city council. I was elected to be on the city council. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a city planner, but I, I promise that I will be a resident first, when I think about how I make decisions. And for me, I think that there is a, there should be a proper order to how things are done. And some of the feedback that we got, and this, I, I think this is typical, for just about every development opportunity we get, we do have, we hear, the building is too tall, so we have height concerns. We hear density, we hear noise. I do think that the cost of developing a community into the future requires some of that, that, that pain within the community. And I think you often see that from a height, density, noise, construction, from that perspective. But the one thing that I could not get away from as a resident, I went back to that area, and there were two things that I did not feel comfortable doing. One was, was walking. I mean, I think I mentioned that before. The second, I drove into the Sunny Slope neighborhood, and coming out of Dale, it's pretty easy to turn right most times, but trying to turn left there is a challenge. Coming up Eden Avenue on my way to Normandale, there's lots of traffic there. And so one of the things that I could not get away from is some of the traffic concerns, and many of the residents talked about that. And for me, I feel like there's a proper order of doing things. And I believe that we should, if we're trying to do development on this kind of scale, my preference would be that we try to resolve some of the issues that are currently existing for residents. And I mentioned that in the, the last meeting. And I think it's incumbent on us as a city council to decide whether or not it's okay for our residents to have these safety issues that are related to traffic. And my preference would be that we address those things to prepare properly, or prepare a location in order to do development. And as I said, I'm not a city planner. I don't know if, if the Perkins site has to be developed in order to address those issues. I personally don't believe that to be the case, but I am positive that our city staff, our engineers can figure out the best way to, to do that. And then the second thing that I thought about, and I think this goes back to a lot of comments from Member Anderson, as a resident, again, going with the theme of, I think there's a proper order to things, I actually don't think of the Perkins site in and of itself. I think of that location along with the, the Public Works location as well. And so there are projects that we're doing in that space that I think, if we have a master plan, and both Member Anderson and Member Jackson actually showed some of this, I would feel much more confident going to the residents to say, we know there's going to be some pain, there's going to be some noise, there's going to be construction, there's more density there than before. Perhaps the view from your property is going to change as things are adjusted. However, here's the master plan. This is what we are trying to accomplish, and these are the benefits to the community. That is a much more palatable message to me, if we're able to tell the story of the master plan, and then go about our business of making those changes happen with the proper order of things. And so in my mind, I, though, the last thing that I did want to mention is the use of TIF. Now, I don't think there's been a TIF application in, just yet for this, but in the last meeting, I believe the developer did mention that there would be an application for TIF. And I can say that I would not support TIF today. Now, there might be things that could have changed my mind. If an application were to come forward, that might be different, but where I sit today, I just don't think there's enough public benefit that would warrant that, the, to award that TIF application, which then, I would question whether or not the current structure of the development, would it even be financially viable without that? I don't know the answer to that, but I am just being open and transparent that that is something that I would not approve. And so those are my comments, and I, I would not be in support of the rezoning as it is currently listed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Member Shotten?
It's, those are great comments from my colleagues. I guess I'm not surprised, but I'm continually impressed. I wanted to, I, I just, all three of those are so thoughtfully presented and thought through. Let me pick up on a few themes. One, Member Anderson talked about our former Planning Commission colleague in her conversation about whether this is an area of change. I, I think- I, I think she misunderstands the situation. And we've got two plans here. We've got the Grandview Development Framework and we've got the Grandview Transportation Study. And those are the documents we ought to be consulting about whether it makes sense to change the zoning in this area. And I think that's what we're doing and what I'm really impressed with tonight is how much is, how much thought has been put into that. So I think, I think we can do this and it's just a matter of, you know, how does it fit with the master planning we've done to date? The other thing that really strikes me here is, I, I think what's so hard about this is that there's several things that are true at the same time that kind of contradict each other. One is that this is a terrific, beautiful, beautifully designed building. It could be quite iconic. The developer has gone to great lengths to design something that really fits in well. And if you think about it, the height is in a place where we're, you know, when you look at the broader aerial map of the area, it's such a long distance from any single family residential. The closest is what, 540 to 600 feet to the north. If you go to the south, it's even further. The immediate neighbors are, you know, the Department of Transportation and the city and the, and the golf course. And so it's, if there is going to be height of this magnitude, this is a good place for it. And I think, you know, the fact that it's got affordable housing, it's, it's going to permit us to put a piece in place of the transportation study in terms of the, the beginning of an off-ramp and a frontage road are all really important pieces to the puzzle and things that speak in its favor. And I think whether we do the restaurant or don't do the restaurant, I think it's a great potential project. At the same time, it is true that the folks in the Sunny Slope neighborhood have a crazy situation that existed long before this project was even developed or dreamed up and continue to exist today. And Member Jackson did a great job of kind of looking at that scenario and trying to figure out what do we do with it? And that's one great idea. I would note that the Grandview Development Framework also includes a a kind of reorienting of Grange Road, not quite as severely as you suggested, but it's in there as well. And so that has been thought through. And the, as I talked about our last meeting, the transportation study, the Grandview Transportation Study actually includes a cross-section of what 50th is supposed to look like as Vernon turns into 50th Street from, from Highway 100 to Eden Avenue. And so, and, and what that looks like is something that makes, that, that brings a different kind of balance to pedestrians versus vehicles, whether that be bicyclists or walkers as opposed to cars. And right now, I, I totally understand the anxiety and frustration of the neighbors in that area as they try to get out of that neighborhood. And they're essentially on an on-ramp because of the free right turn onto Highway 100 North. So that kind of brings to the question, you know, to the head of, of what Member Pierce was talking about. How do we, how do we do this? We've got this district. We've got a master plan, both from the transportation reconnection as well as the redevelopment of it. And, and how do we, what order do we do it in? How can we do things? And one of the things that came to mind for me as I've been wrestling with this is at our last HRA meeting, we talked, we approved basically six or seven million out of, what, nine million dollars of improvements along Eden Avenue and then a pedestrian bridge over the railroad on the Public Works site. And that was all made possible by the tax increment financing that came out of the Avidor. And without the Avidor, we wouldn't have been able to do those improvements. We wouldn't have had the money. We would have had to figure out something else to do for that. And I think this is exactly the kinds of development that can fund the 50th from Highway 100 to Eden Avenue as well. That if we, and we can go hand in hand with that and make those things work. And without it, we can't do that. And we'll continue to have that problem that we've had before this idea was even presented and we'll continue to have it until we come up with some source of money and we don't have one. So I think that there is room here to do both at the same time. And I think it's an iterative process where you have to kind of ratchet up with one project that then funds something that then helps you continue to move along. And I think that can be done simultaneously. I don't know the mechanics of it. There's a lot of different ways to do it. And I, you know, I would rely on our staff and the development team to figure out how that would work. But it's clear that this project is going to need tax increment financing. If for nothing else than to compensate for the, the coverage of, you know, leaving a portion of the site open for a future off-ramp from Highway 100 going north. And so I, I'm, I'm ambivalent about the project for the, for the reason that, that I, I can appreciate the residents in the Sunny Slope neighborhood wanting something to get done. But I think without the project, we can't get that done. So I, what I would like to see us try and do tonight is come up with a way to create the funding that we need to redo 50th Street as well as that Grange Road area and that infrastructure and use this project to make that happen. So that's kind of where I am, Mr. Mayor.
All right, good. Thank you. Yeah, just a multitude of great thinking going on and concern, I think, about the potential benefit to community versus potential adverse impact on the neighborhood. Going through that traditional analysis that we all go through. As Member Staunton said, those challenges over in the Sunny Slope neighborhood existed way before this project came in front of us. I'm told that there might be the ability, I don't know if Director Milner, you checked with him, Manager Neil, to see if in the ground on 50th, we have the ability to put a traffic light in at Dale. But I, I know that getting into Dale, if you're eastbound 50th, is problematic at certain times of the day, more than others. And then getting left out of Dale is problematic. Now, it's a short distance between two potential traffic semaphores, but it strikes me that everybody's on the, everybody on this council is sensitive to the notion that there are challenges traffic-wise in the Sunny Slope neighborhood. We want to try to figure out how to solve them. To the point where, Member Jackson has gotten out the crepe paper and the construction paper and then cut out fire stations and parking ramps and, or parking lots and tried to figure out how to make that big piece work. And I'll comment on that in a minute. But Director Milner, did you, did that issue get conveyed to you?
It did, Mayor. I mean, even if there is conduit there, we need to do a bigger traffic study specific for Dale. I mean, that wouldn't meet typical warrants for a traffic signal. But if, if that's what the council wants to investigate, we would have to do some, some further specific transportation-related studies with that intersection and how it would work with Grange and 50th.
When we first, I guess we had, I had conversation, I guess many of us did, with the neighbors over in Sunny Slope, and I think it was Mr., Mr. Sundberg. If I got his name correct. Let me look here, my notes. Early on, oh, Mr. Lundberg, Steve Lundberg, at Hilltop, that had some suggestions about, let's get at these problems on 50th. And I think it's a good suggestion. There are very, very few streets that go all the way through Edina. And, and Mr. Lundberg got me thinking early on about some of the changes we could effectuate on 50th to both reduce speed and hopefully volume as well. And I'd like to get those addressed. This whole issue of what comes first, the horse of the cart, it's an endless one that I've been involved with during the time I've been on the council. And I think Member Staunton said it well. Member Pierce was talking about a, a master plan and we, and we do have two plans. We've got the Grandview Framework and we've got the transportation plan. And it's a matter of trying to implement elements of it when we have an opportunity. And when I think about this project, I, I've really wrestled with it. I do think on balance, it brings benefit to the community. I like the notion that of the various developments that could be on this site because of the zoning that's involved. This one stands out because it involves a potential for some very nice living. Not only for the residents that would be in their market rate, but also those folks in there on the committed affordable housing. I think multifamily would generate a lot less traffic than other things that could be on that site, including retail, including office, including another restaurant. In fact, as, as it has been noted, I think Mr. Walton's willing to not have a restaurant there, which would generate less traffic than is presently there. So I think we could solve that with a conversation about whether there should or should not be a restaurant there. If there were a change in the configuration with the exit ramps there and we were able to claim some green space north of those two historic buildings. And incidentally, I feel like those buildings are orphaned buildings, whether Perkins is there or something else is there, they're just not in the right place. And, and I think there's a better spot for them that meets, that, that kind of meets the character of our community a little bit more effectively. Either down in the Mill Pond and in Wooddale Park, near the Mill Pond, or even out in Artisan Acres. I, I see a time, maybe not in my time, when those buildings could get moved to a place that was more appropriate for them. Because I see very little use with those buildings sighted the way they are. To me, it's a great spot for potential fire station. I don't really favor the idea of continued commercial development over there in that, in those, in that Minn dot property. But I do think you could create a nice governmental campus at some point in time where you could add that fire station that would serve northeast Edina. How soon that'll all happen, I'm not sure. I think we could have some conversations with Minn dot about that. And certainly, Mr. Lundberg's comments about 50th got me thinking about that bigger picture again. And also seeing if we can't figure out a way to help get a sound wall from 50th on down to the creek on the east side to help those neighbors in that Sunny Slope area diminish the noise volume from Highway 100. That's something I'd like to work on as well. If I go back to this site, I, I feel like the removal of Perkins is a real advantage. Getting something else in there, as I mentioned, especially something of this caliber, of this quality is really beneficial. What I'd also commend the developer on is the offer to give up land, basically for an easement for the city to help accomplish some of the things that we want to accomplish. The plan that they proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Over time, they've lowered the density. As a Member Staunton has said, they've included affordable at a substantial level. I think that's a real strong element. I concur on that as well. There's a real high level of design and materials. They moved it back to the west and now they propose tonight to move it to the south. As I mentioned earlier, without the restaurant, there's actually less traffic than there would be compared to what exists there now with Perkins. Member Staunton mentioned the proximity to neighbors. It's always something that we're mindful of. Government is the only neighbor here, government. Within 500 to 550 feet, there isn't a single family home. There's a trunk highway to the west. It's really a perfect location for something like this, but it has a neighborhood orientation to it. The thing that's been hanging me up is how I felt about the height. Because when we built City Hall, I was on the city council, and one of the things we tried to do was to make sure that we had City Hall serve as a transition into that single-family neighborhood as you move to this, to the east. So the land, the use of land and stone materials, like is on 50th, along the walls, along the country club. You see land and stone in the neighborhoods. It's on some of the bridges. The use of really great materials like copper, the height of it. Everything was meant to give that building a residential affect and help it transition into that single-family neighborhood. So when I think about Perkins, the site there, and the building that's proposed, it's a beautiful building. You know, I, I, I wish it were four stories. I wish it were the height of the Lorient. But when I, I heard, I think one of the neighbors, Kirk Adal, say, you know, in terms of liking the Lorient, he liked that. But he, I think he mentioned two or three times, if it was only like Nolan Mainz. And that's why I asked Kerry Teague to check on the height and discovered that there was only a one-foot differential. I don't think we should be thinking about this in terms of stories. We should be thinking about it in terms of feet. So it's only one foot of height in, in difference. And I think it's five feet different in height and from the Avidor. And so that, that's affected my thinking a little bit here too. As I mentioned, the design is, is first rate. The, the land easement that they've given up, the city's request, is a significant factor for me. And I think it should be for all of us to think about following that transportation plan and the broader Grandview plan in the future. They pushed the seventh floor further back to the west, as I mentioned earlier. I didn't like the idea when we looked at it during the public hearing of, of kind of squishing down the building to six stories and making it wider and squatier on the site and losing that glass curtain connection between the two buildings. I thought that was an important element for me to consider. And so as I, as I said, I, the thing that's been bothering me from the beginning and has been giving me much pause is the, is the height. But when I think about it in the context of being next to a trunk highway, over 500 feet from single-family homes, government only is the only neighbor. To the, to the east is the country club and that beautiful vista that people would enjoy living there. The shadow study bothered me a bit when I saw the shadow cast onto, I don't remember if that's the 13th or 14th hole over there at three o'clock in the afternoon on the summer solstice. But I also looked at some photography of the Denver Country Club, which is surrounded by tall buildings, much taller than this one, you know, actual 20-story buildings. And so, you know, golf and a little bit of urbanity can exist in a harmonious way. And this shadow that gets cast a little bit onto the fairway through the rough where there's already a tree line situation, I think that's a de minimis sort of effect. So when I think about, remember Pierce's comment about there's got to be a proper order of things. I would say that over time, that I've been doing this, as much as you plan, things sometimes come out of sequence, but it's good to have a master plan. And to the point Member Staunton is making, that these things can be done simultaneously, I believe that they can. And I don't really want to miss the opportunity to put in place on the Perkins site, something that's really a good use. And for me, I can temper my concern about the height by thinking about it in terms of feet, not stories. And, and I think on balance, I know I'm in favor of this proposal as made because I do not think at the end of the day, it'll have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, especially if we eliminate the restaurant. I think that's a, a conversation to have. So what I'm sensing here is that we've got three people in favor, two not in favor, the way it's presently set up. But I would think it would be effective to be having a conversation about the, the restaurant. And that's, it's value to the project versus its potential impact. Because we do have the restaurant there. I think the traffic study is pretty clear. We'd have another 1,100 cars a day moving around. I'm not sure how it would affect Sunny Slope, frankly. I think a lot of those cars would be heading north on the trunk highway or south or going over to the closest commercial district, which would be, you know, juries and everything that's over there as opposed to go heading east on, on 50th. But nonetheless, I'm sure there'd be some traffic on 50th to give some consideration to. So those are, those are my thoughts as I, on balance, favor going forward with this because of all of the strengths of it. And I think have been articulated by others as well. So are there, could we talk a little bit about the restaurant aspects of this, Member Staunton?
So yeah, I'm happy to talk about the restaurant, but the other dynamic I wanted to talk about is just the, and, and this has been a repeated event for us lately, is the disconnection between the tax increment financing discussion and the land use discussion. Financing discussion and the land use discussion. And I'm feeling like they're really connected here, because. I'm not in favor of moving ahead with the project unless we can harness the project to do what we need to do with the infrastructure. And so I'm, I need to figure out a way to tie those two things together as we move forward.
That's a good thought. I know that Member Pierce has stated unequivocally that at present time he doesn't support. The rezoning or doesn't support the use of TIF today, because he's unclear on the public benefit, and I think you're saying that in a different way that. Uh, and the question would be, is there some sort of uh condition we can impose here that. Uh, ties the two uh things together, i.e. TIF and the approval of this building.
And to Member Anderson's point about, you know, who's benefiting here, you know, the beauty. One benefit of having a tax increment finance conversation is we are going to get a peek under the hood and find out what are the components of this and what makes sense and. Who's getting how much for what piece of it? And how does the city benefit, and to Member Pierce's point. You know, where's the public benefit and how much of it is, and and it's it's almost like we're. We're having this conversation without knowing any of that when that's critical to making this whole thing work for everybody.
Thank you, yeah, and I want to point out that um the use of TIF for um affordable housing is important as well. Uh, it's not just for, um, even though you don't see that as a public benefit. Um, ha- bringing affordable housing into our community is a public benefit, and I would include that um as a good use of TIF money.
Mr. Kendall, you've heard the conversation here, uh, any thoughts on uh from a legal process standpoint, um. How we address uh Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-one, which would grant approval of preliminary rezoning. And an ordinance change in the context of also wanting to uh. Uh, address this TIF issue before we get to a final approval. Or even a preliminary approval basis, Manager Neil, you've got your hand in the air.
Well, I I can, I can wait for. Uh, David Kendall to respond to your question, but I do want to throw in here for that too.
Yeah, because I think uh all of us don't want to get blindsided uh on this next go around if it's a TIF discussion only. And then we're sitting there thinking, uh, this isn't. And then the whole thing collapses because we don't like what we're hearing, so let's, let's, let's hear it now. Mr. Kendall?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I I think you can, if there's TIF financing, you can certainly tie conditions to that. Um, I'm not sure exactly how to, I think Member Pierce had his hand up, but I'm not sure exactly how. Uh, or what the question is in terms of, are you asking specifically whether you could tie. Improvements to fiftieth street to TIF financing?
Ever Stotin, you want to explain on a broader basis what you're thinking about, were you, were you including that kind of public?
You know, I don't think we yet know what the question is.
More to the site and near the site.
Yeah, I just know that I'd like to link it, so I'd be interested in what Member Pierce and what um Manager Neil have to say. I assume they want to speak to this issue in some way as well.
Engineer Neil?
I, I think it's important for you all to um to know how kind of what our existing staff protocol is around this. Particular issue, because it is, I know it does feel like a chicken and egg sort of discussion, and we've had it before. And we do have times when uh these projects uh that we've granted regulatory entitlements to. Uh, and then subsequently, a TIF deal of some kind fall apart. Uh, we've seen it at seventy-two hundred, seventy-two fifty France Avenue, we've seen it at Pentagon Park. We, we disconnect these uh, these two concepts, uh, because we don't want. Uh, the council to be put in a position where you're negotiating uh incentives for development. At the same time, you're talking about regulatory uh review and regular regulatory entitlements. The, it, it feels like the problems of of connecting those two things uh really outweigh the possible benefits of them. Um, when I ask, when I hear uh Councilmember Stotin talk about can we, can we harness this project? Uh, by making sure we don't give all the TIF to the developer, I I don't, those aren't your words, those are my words, but I think that's. That's how we would harness uh the tax increment coming from a development like this. That's wholly within our authority to do that, that's, that's uh, that's the council's decision about what to do with that tax increment. Um, and so you can, whether we make that a condition of the approval tonight, you can or you don't, or you don't. But it's certainly within your unilateral authority to hold on to that increment and and use it in a way or not use it. In a way that you think the city uh most benefits.
Member Pierce?
Yeah, so I um, I just wanted to to rewind a a little bit, um. When I talk about having a master plan. The, like, the conversation we're having now suggested me that we don't have one. And so we have the traffic plan, we have small area plans, we have the, a plan for Grandview. Right? But when we looked at what we had for the public work site. We looked at a plan that we collectively said we can't fund to build that. So we need to figure out a different plan to get that done. And so when I, when I say plan, maybe I should use a different word, but I think. I think it's out of place for us to build the structure that's proposed. In place of Perkins, when Member Jackson has a whole different view. Of how we address traffic issues, and there's a fire station there, there's the historic district there. That suggested me that we don't have a plan, and so what, what Member Jackson proposed, right, that's. That is an option of what we could do, which includes this development in place of the Perkins site. Um, but but we would never approve that today. And so I struggle with, um, and and I'm, you know, I'm just being very transparent. I want to be able to say, when I get the question. Why did you, James, approve the, this, this development? And where the Perkins site is, I want to be able to say something like. Well, we, we have a roundabout going in, we're going through um Eden Avenue. We are are gonna have a public park, some kind of benefit where the public work site is. And we're gonna have affordable housing for um seniors there. Uh, in that same location, and on the other side of a hundred, where the Perkins is today. We're also gonna have a structure, and here is the grand view of what that looks like. And here's how we're gonna get it done, and that might take us five years, seven years, ten years. And we're gonna use TIF to help do a portion of that, and these are the benefits of TIF. Um, so to me, like, that, that to me is what, when I think of having a plan. To actually go start developing that area for the community. And for the benefits of the, of Edina, that's what I'm, I'm looking for. I'm not looking for what's in the small area, the small area plan or the comprehensive plan, those are guidelines. Those are, are, are great ideas of what we'd like to see. But we gotta click down as a council on what's our plan to actually go get that done. And and I don't like the, I don't, I don't like the idea. Of approving an apartment complex, compartmentalizing that, and, and then we've got. Just a mile away from that, a big vacant lot that we've been talking about developing. And we've had conversations of how we can now start to move on that. To me, those things ought to be in conjunction with a grand view, and this could be part of that. But right now, it really feels like a one-off. And so that's what I mean when I say plan.
If I may, Mr. Mayor? Um, I I think the frustration here, um, what I'm hearing from you, Member Pierce, is. Complicated by that public work site with development. And and my understanding of this site, at the Perkins site, is that this is a pretty unique opportunity to redevelop this site. That prior to COVID nineteen recession, related recession, this was not an option. So when the Grandview plan was written, the Perkins was planning to be there until the end of time. And so this is a pretty unique opportunity. It's complicated, the public worksite complicates this because we get a sense of control that really doesn't exist. In most situations, because when a piece of property is privately owned, when it gets redeveloped is not within the hands of the city council. So we've got kind of a unique opportunity here, um, Mr. Walton found this site and said, hey, I I can. This is an opportunity for me right now, it didn't exist when the Grandview Small Area Plan was written. It didn't exist in twenty sixteen when the transportation plan was written, in fact, he saw this site and didn't even know about that, it kind of came up, I think. Um, uh, partway through, so it it's really frustrating. Um, as a public official to say, there's a lot of uncertainty. And, and to me, I, that's something that is, you know, you, I want, I like to have answers. And I like to, to be able to answer everything, and one of the difficult things about being in government, especially. In this kind of situation is we don't have a lot of control um over what private developers are going to do, so. I think, I I don't know if that's helpful or not, but um, but to me, it's having to live with a certain amount of um serendipity. That, that, that the type of master plan that that might help you um. Uh, envision what's going to happen, isn't really um something that's often given us the opportunity. We can have guidelines, but we can't force private people to do um something according to our plan. And that, that to me, i- it's difficult and it's, it's uncomfortable, it's hard to translate that to the general public, but I think that's something that we live with.
Thank you, Member Jackson. It's causing me to think about when I first got to be mayor back in um oh five. We were doing a South Hill District Study, and we were two thirds of the way through it roughly. It was, it started when I was a council member. And all of a sudden, Warren Beck came with the idea of putting up the Weston Hotel. With the hotel and the condos above it, and we weren't through the study. And it was one of those market situations where we had to decide what were we gonna do, you know, deal with what was in front of us from a. Uh, standpoint of an application that they've, you know, they've, they've got a right to have those applications processed when they want to do something and. And so we, we did, we took that on and dealt with it, and it was tough on the council, but we got, we got through it, now it's. Part of the fabric of our community out there. This falls a little bit into that same category for me, it's zoned, currently zoned retail and the odd part of it auto parking. You know, so what could go there? Think about the ramifications of uh traffic, think about office, medical office, retail. It could just, you know, come back to us and say, listen, you know, uh, this developer walks away and. And the, the next one shows up with another opportunity. And uh, it generates a lot more traffic than than this one does without any of the same architectural materials elements. So, you, you, I've found that you just can't wait, as much as you'd like to have. Uh, people following that plan and you, you, you do this planning, I mean, we've been, our town has been really great over time. About looking to the future and creating small area plans and other things that we've tried to follow, but. This is one of those, as you point out, Member Jackson, one of those unique circumstances where you have to think about the here and the now. And figure out how you're gonna make it work with what's yet to come. And I think we can do that, and um. Especially if we have this conversation about the restaurant, because if there's no restaurant here, there's less traffic than exists now, and that's one of the main concerns everybody has. If Mr. Walton is saying he doesn't care about a restaurant, then, then why don't we think about the number one problem, which is traffic and not. You know, not approve it with a restaurant. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor, I just wanted to say a few words about uh traffic. I think we have, you, you have all heard a lot from, from the adjoining neighborhoods. Uh, about the traffic issues that they are encountering on a daily basis. I think before we start getting too far into the design of, of the fixes, we need to be more. Precise about the diagnosis of of what, what is being experienced there. What does the data tell us about volumes, about speeds, about property, uh, property damage accidents? But personal injury accidents, et cetera, we need to gather some more data about what, what is actually occurring there from a traffic perspective. Before uh, before we can design the right kinds of improvements for it, so. As much as I'd like to, to figure, figure all that out tonight, we just don't have that level of data available to you tonight. I think what I'm getting from, from the council though is a pretty strong message uh for, to staff that we need to figure that out. And uh, we need to, whether we do it in-house or we acquire some analytical assistance from a consulting partner. We need to figure out what exactly is, is happening there that's problematic, and then how do we design responses to it?
What I also hear you say, Manager Neil, if we loop, loop back or circle back to the um. Uh, the, the regulatory approvals in conjunction with uh potential TIF analysis. You're saying stay the course the way we've traditionally done it, and that is deal with the regulatory issues now. And then deal with the TIF issues uh when they face us and determine whether they're acceptable or not acceptable.
Well, that, that is my, that is my recommendation to you, I can tell you that's how we approach that issue as staff. But it's been a while since we've had that discussion with councils, so if there is a, a different approach, uh, certainly. There's, there, we ought to make some time to talk about it.
So, Mr. Robert Stotin? Um, so here, the way I'm thinking about it is. I'm, I'm not ready to say yes to this until I know what we can get for the community as part of it. So if I know that TIF, the TIF application is going to be forthcoming and this project cannot happen without a TIF application. Then I get more comfortable with that, but if I'm giving approval and this project could happen without TIF. Then I'm not ready for that because I would want. I would want to harness the project for making the kind of improvements we've talked about in some way. So I don't know if that sharpens the issue for Mr. Kendall or, or if Mr. Walton wants to chime in on that point, but.
Yeah, it seems like Mr. Walton wants to uh render a comment here. Mr. Walton?
If, if it's okay, I definitely happy to go on record saying we don't have a TIF application in yet. The project wouldn't proceed without TIF, and this, and that application would be, is forthcoming. So there would be a vote on that application, and that's the moment where if you think back to the last meeting that we had, where I said. We'd be looking for more like twelve to fifteen years versus the typical twenty to twenty-six years a lot of developers ask for. Or we were trying to be at seventy-five percent of the increment versus ninety percent that a lot of developers ask for. So those are the things that we'll be talking about, what does this project need, and therefore what can the city harness for these other. Uh, these other needs, these, so that would all, as I understand it, I believe Mr. Neil has said this, that's part of this next application. But we would not be proceeding unless we have a positive TIF vote, so if that helps everyone with their vote tonight.
I, I mean, one of the reasons you don't have a, a TIF application in front of you tonight is because we tell the developer, sit on it, don't submit that. Even if you're thinking about it, until you've got a bona fide project that the council said can go forward, so. And after, we tell them they, they should wait to submit formal TIF applications if they're going to. Until after they've got the. until after they've got the regulatory entitlements from the council before going forward. So if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna change from that, I, I understand that. I just wanted you to know what the existing situation was and, uh, and, and why you didn't have that to compare tonight.
Member Stotin, that.
I'm, I'm not saying I want to change from that, but I, and Mr. Kendall maybe can confirm my instinct on this. I mean, if we gave preliminary approval tonight and the developer can do this without TIF, then they'd have the ability to follow through and then apps, you know, with the, the subject to a final approval, which would just be dotting the i's and crossing the t's on whatever conditions were part of this could move forward with the project. I mean, I understand the developer is saying that there's going to be a TIF application. And if, and if it's not satisfactorily resolved, he can't proceed. But I don't, you know, is there any way to put that into the conditions of the approval?
Well, so, Mr. Mayor, to answer Member Staunton's question, I think he's correct. You know, this is, if Mr. Walton is saying that he wants to use TIF or needs to use TIF, he can certainly do that. But if he has approval to proceed on a rezoning, he can also, if he changes his mind, he could proceed without TIF. So, um, I guess the council has to be aware of that. I, I, I have not seen a situation where a council put a requirement into zoning approvals that the project must include TIF.
Man.
It is pretty weird. Member, Member Pierce?
I want to make one more go at this, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, just in response to, um, council, uh, person Jackson, um, I'm not, I'm not frustrated. Um, it's not that I don't see the future. Like, I'm not, I'm not struggling with any of that. And so I kind of felt a little lecture to there. Uh, so just being transparent, um, no need to lecture to me. Here is what I would, uh, in my mind, I agree with what Member Staunton said. My struggle is if we're going to approve this development, what I would want us to be able to say is if we're going to apply for TIF and if we're going to approve that, we are going to address the traffic issues for the Sunny Slope neighborhood. And not ten years from now, eight years from now, fifteen years from now. But as a part of this project, we're going to address those traffic issues. Um, and, and we're not addressing the traffic issues by removing the restaurant. Right? That is, that's just a red herring. Because those traffic issues as, exist now. Those traffic issues exist when you're driving to Normandale. Right? Those traffic issues have been there for a long time. And so when, when I say I want to see a plan, if we're going to approve this, we should be able to go to our residents and say, yeah, we heard you. Lots of traffic issues in that area. Here's how, here's how we're going to address that. And I'm just, I'm talking, uh, as if I've got a whiteboard in front of me and I don't. If the whiteboard says we're going to approve this project and we're going to approve twelve million dollars of TIF and five of that is going to go to create a new street uh, so that traffic flows through this area more efficiently for the residents in that area. That, that to me is something that we can execute and we can send, we can go to the community and say, here's our plan for how we address this. That, that, that's what I'm talking about when I say, uh, we have a master plan. Yeah, we've got small area plans. Yeah, we got guidelines. Um, but at some point we have to go from that to a plan of something that we can execute against, that we can show the benefits of that to the city of Edina and for the residents. That, that's what's, that's what's in my head when I think about, um, how we would move forward with this particular project.
Yeah, that was really, that was really helpful for that clarification. Thank you. For me, it was really helpful. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we really, so, so what if we simply added a condition that said that the project is approved subject to, um, addressing the traffic or however we want to describe them, issues for the Sunny Slope neighborhood in conjunction with final approval to the satisfaction of the council. That way we can go through the P, the, the TIF process and it's more, I think what I'm taking away from what you're saying, Member Pierce, is it's more than just the money. It's what are we going to do actually? And so we can do both of those between now and final approval. And if we can't satisfactorily resolve that, then there's no final approval.
So what, um, I just will back up a second here. I heard Manager Neil say, first we need to study it to see what the problem is and then try to correct it. So I'm assuming that you're, the way you've coached, uh, language of that is that's what, that's what you intend to study the problem, diagnose it and then make it, make that, uh, diagnosis part of the solution in conjunction with a potential approval?
Well, I don't, I don't even want to get into that much detail.
Okay.
I, I think, I mean, there's been a lot of good thinking here about what needs to happen together. And the question is, do we want to give ourselves a chance to try to figure that out or not? And I think if we say no tonight, then we don't get a chance to figure that out. If we say yes with the condition of satisfactorily resolving the Fiftieth Street issues in conjunction with this, we at least have a chance. And then we can sort out, what does that mean from a financing perspective? What does that mean from an engineering perspective?
Okay, I'm with you. So you're saying that it, at the end of the day, it may not even involve TIF in this project, but it, it does involve a solution to some of the challenges we have on Fiftieth.
Well, I think to, to Member Pierce's point, it needs to happen with this project. This isn't, this isn't a future thing. This needs to happen now.
Yeah, I'm not saying that it has, it doesn't happen at the same time. I'm just.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm with you. No, I'm with, I'm with you. Yeah, I should have articulated that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Jackson?
So, um, you know, Member Pierce, I apologize. When I talk about frustration, I talk about my own frustration. Um, I didn't mean to project that on you. Um, these are, I, I, I love the sense of immediacy, um, that's doing this. I see these as two separate problems, but I think, um, given the really genuine and severe concern to the neighborhood, that the idea of linking them, um, is really appealing and, and to see a solution to this. Cause this is a longstanding problem with the traffic on Fiftieth. Um, the in-walkability of this area. And I tried to walk over to look at the historic sites and it's kind of scary from the City Hall parking lot to make that crossing. So there's a whole lot of transportation issues here. And if we could link those two to get that immediacy, I think that's just, would be wonderful. I don't know how to do it, but, um, but I think it's incumbent on us as a city council to say this is a priority to get these transportation sis- uh, issues resolved. And, and I love the idea of, um, leveraging the opportunity with this project to do that.
Member Anderson, I didn't mean to have you left out of this conversation about, uh, traffic and these other things we're talking about. Your thoughts?
Um, well, I think you're hearing, Mr. Mayor, is a call for action. That's what I, that's what I'm hearing. It's certainly my thoughts. I was really, I was trying to go here tonight. Farm-based code, farm-based design is a plan. That's, that's how we consider it. It doesn't have to be that. It can be whatever. I, I also think that this is a pretty interesting group of people and I don't think it's even by coincidence that this public worksite thing is actually coming together and, and under, in, with this group of people making decisions and going forward and actually taking action on things that require action. And I, I, I think that's what's occurring here tonight as well. And I, I, so I commend this whole conversation. I, it's, I think we're, I think we're moving in the right direction. Um, but I do agree with Member Jackson in that we have two separate issues. We, we, we're going to make a decision tonight about whether to rezone. And then there's the, the very real concern that has been dramatized by all the conversations from the residents, from the immediate neighbors, from others. But, but this, I mean, as a practical matter, this goes back to twenty twelve or even twenty sixteen. So the, the, the necessary steps to cure the infrastructure problems have not been taken. And that's incumbent upon us now to try to resolve that. And I'm all for it in whatever way we can, we can manage that process. If we can link them, then good idea. I, I'm not sure, it doesn't sound like that protocol is available to us in, in just that way. It might be. But, um, but I, I want to be absolutely clear on how I feel about it. And that is, is that we have to take this district, this, this emerging neighborhood, this, this area into strong consideration about how this is going to work, how this is going to be. We are funneling right now all the traffic up to Fiftieth and we will continue to do so. If we don't resolve that, regardless of, I mean, are the, there, there, these next steps will be taken, whether by this council or by another one in the future. We're not planning for it. We don't have, if we're not clear on it, then we're going to really create problems. Because you, you know, we, we have this, this whole neighborhood as well coming over the bridge, coming up Normandale, going up to Fiftieth from there. I get concerned about a bottleneck in that area. And then people deciding to peel off over to Tracy, down Valley View, down Gleason. I get concerned about that. And so how are we going to handle it? So that's, though, that's what I've been trying to say here tonight. And I'm hearing that from Member Pierce. I'm hearing that from Member Staunton. And, um, what, we just need to resolve to take action in those areas. So, but thanks for calling.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you want to take another, um, well, Member Staunton, give me that language again, would you please?
So, so if we added a condition, it basically said that the approval is conditioned on satisfactory resolution of the transportation issues on Fiftieth Street. Then at final, we could vote on whether there was satisfactory resolution of those issues.
And just to be clear, Fiftieth Street around City Hall.
Yeah, I'm talking about from Highway one hundred to Eden Avenue.
Yeah, there you go.
We would look at the whole system, that subsystem of.
Sure. Well, then probably would include Grange as well.
Yes, yep.
I, I just don't want to have, um, this project conditioned on fixing Fiftieth and France as well. That's all.
Oh, no, no.
I agree with that.
And, and then I note also that the ordinance that's in front of us is for a first reading. So I assume we could do first reading and wait until the final for a second reading.
That's, that's what I would assume unless, yeah, we could do that.
Yes, that's correct. Creating the district, is that, Carrie, is that right?
That is correct. Yep, so we could make changes or not grant a first or a second reading.
Okay.
So, Member Staunton, if you look at the resolution, there's a section three approval and then there's a multitude of conditions attached to it.
All right, so we add a condition under.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three that says, um,
You said satisfactory resolution of the traffic issues on Fiftieth Street.
I would say the transportation issues because it's more than traffic.
Okay, and then what about the use of the word satisfactory?
I like it.
Yeah, I'm thinking about between now and final, are we going to get what we need to know with respect to the issues?
I, I think, I think what I'm hearing from my colleagues is if we don't, then we shouldn't approve it.
Which is not any different than any other preliminary plat you approve, right? There are conditions attached and if.
Right.
The conditions aren't met.
Right, it's just that this final, you know, before, we can't really, we, in fairness to the developer, we have to give him notice of what the condition is that has to be satisfied in order to get final. We can't dream up a new condition when final comes around.
Yeah. No, I, I was, I was thinking more, I was thinking more about the, the challenge internally from a staff standpoint of uh, either through staff itself or in conjunction with consultants, being able to satisfy that condition between preliminary and final. That's what I was wondering about.
Yeah.
What is the timeline between those two?
Couple of months to a couple of years sometimes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the TIF could fit in there. That could be part of that discussion and TIF application and our consideration of it, right?
That's correct. I think so, yep.
I'd like to add the term timely or something to, uh, see that this is going to be happening, um, have, with a sense of urgency. So it's not a ten-year plan, but a, that happened, you know, at the same time as the development.
I, I'm assuming that, that this is a condition really a more on the city, right? We're not expecting Mr. Walton to lead this effort. We're, you're expecting staff and consulting partners to lead the effort, right?
Right. I mean, we may end up financing it with the TIF money from the project, but we're not asking him to build the project.
Right, yeah.
Or, or, or do the diagnosis and remedy, right?
And I think to Member Jackson's point, um, you know, I think satisfactory can take a lot of that into account.
Well, you could, you could put the language in there that you, this was done prior to or at the time of final approval, request for final approval.
I, I, I like the straight satisfactory resolution.
So what I've got, it says a condition now is a satisfactory resolution of the transportation issues on Fiftieth Street by the city.
Between, between one hundred and Eden.
Yep.
Director Milner has his hand up.
What was the, what was the geography of it again we wanted to use?
Between Highway one hundred and Eden Avenue.
All right. All right, so the condition is satisfactory resolution of the transportation issues on Fiftieth Street between Highway one hundred and Eden Avenue by the city.
Sure. Director Milner had his hand up a minute ago. I just want to make sure.
Director Milner?
I was just going to say plan four because construction will not happen in three months. So.
Oh, yeah.
Want to be clear that it's a, a study and options will be presented to the council. And then you can pre- uh, select potential options to meet that satisfactory condition you just stated. So I, I, there's no way we can reconstruct everything immediately.
Right.
In the next three months.
Yep.
And then what we would be, uh, reviewing, just to be clear, would be options around resolving those issues. We just said a hundred to Eden Avenue. We would be including in that, and this is more of a question. Um, but in my mind, I see a, a construct that includes the traffic project options plus how the development fits in there. And how we might or might not be leveraging TIF to kind of get that benefit plus any other benefit we think there could be for the community. We would look at that entire construct, um, upon approval. Is that fair?
I think it is. And I think in the interim, we're probably going to have a TIF application that we're going to have to go through and decide on that as well.
Sure.
Yep. So I think to Member Pierce's point, that the language that you suggested, Member Staunton, a satisfactory plan now modified by what Director Milner said, a satisfactory plan for resolution of the transportation issues on Fiftieth Street between Highway one hundred and Eden, Eden Avenue by the city.
I would, if I may make another suggestion, I don't think it's just 50th Street.
Yeah.
We got traffic, it's, it's.
Grange.
Grange and Eden has been a major safety issue. So I would say.
So in the area, including, yeah.
Yeah, it's the system, it's the subsystem.
Around City Hall.
The Grandview Transportation Network east of 100.
Yeah, because we can't just do one with the, the other.
That's probably a better way to put it.
Okay, so how do we want to do that? A satisfactory plan for resolution of the, uh, transportation issues, transportation system issues.
East of 100 in the Grandview District.
Alright, this would be, uh, condition 23.
Right.
It would, it would be a satisfactory plan for resolution of. The transportation system issues east of Highway 100 in the Grandview District.
Right.
Okay.
So where does this leave the discussion of the restaurant?
Director Milner?
From a, from this latest condition, we could study with and without. The restaurant and the impacts on the network in that area. But if council has a strong view one way or the other, then we wouldn't have to study both options.
I, yeah, I, I. I, you know, I, I always felt like. Adding the restaurant or taking the restaurant out just did feel again like. A planful, thoughtful way to approach the issue. And so I think I would do what Director Milner said and study with and without, and without. Uh, the restaurant. And then we should end up with a plan. That will help kind of holistically address the traffic in that area. Um, and like I said earlier, then that will be part of this construct that says. Here's the vehicle, which could be the, the development that helps fund part of getting this done. And I liked member Jackson saying it needs to be timely. Um, and so we don't want it to, to be drawn out.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Walton, are you comfortable with this with and without the restaurant notion?
I think so be, because if it needs to be satisfactory and it does, we'll determine if the restaurant. Helps make it satisfactory or not during the process. We're open to having the restaurant. We're open to deleting the restaurant.
Okay. Alright. So, um. Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 2021 dash 41? Granting approval of the preliminary rezoning. At 4917 Eden Avenue. Uh, with an additional condition being condition number 23. A satisfactory plan for resolution of a transportation, of transportation system issues. East of Highway 100 in the Grandview District. Coupled with a, a motion to approve on a first reading basis only. Ordinance number 202103, which would establish the PUD zoning district for this site.
Selmo.
Second.
Motion by member Stoughton, second by member Jackson. Any further discussion? Now we'll go, um, yes, member Anderson.
Um, just to mention, um, my vote on this is going to be consistent with my earlier statement. However. If you meet, if we meet the satisfactory test here, um, I'll take a very, very close look at that in the second reading.
Very, very good. Thank you, Miss Member Anderson. Alright, uh, anything else from members? Otherwise we'll have. Clerk Allison do the roll call. Clerk Allison, go ahead and do the roll on the motion that's stated.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
May.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hublin?
Aye.
Motion carries. And, uh, thank you. Wow, that was really, that was interesting. Thank you very much, everybody. Oh, wonderful conversation. Um, let's move on. That ends the, uh, reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And, um, commission correspondence, anything else that's come in? That anyone tells us about from a staff standpoint? Aviation noise update, anything there?
Uh, I don't have one tonight.
Me either. Uh, mayor and council comments? Uh, member Jackson? Anything?
Nothing. I just, I'm looking forward to the day when we can actually go swimming. So I'm sure that Major Neil will say something about that. Oh, thanks.
Well, maybe Major Neil can cover that in his comments.
I will, yeah.
Okay, uh, member Pierce, anything?
Uh, no, I just appreciate the conversation tonight. Um. Other than that, no.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Uh, member Stoughton?
Um, I would echo that. Wow, what a, what a tremendous group of people. It is a pleasure working with all of you. And the, the kind of, if people think this stuff is greased ahead of time, they should watch this meeting. Because we showed that, you know, there's real action that happens in these meetings and, um. I am looking forward to doing this in person and I understand we will have one more. Uh, non-in-person meeting and then our next regular council meeting, the one in July will be in person.
I'm going to talk about that too.
Alright, terrific. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, member, member Anderson.
Just that I appreciate the spirit of the evening. This is, um, I think frankly, that we've taken a big step forward. For the community in terms of really locking on to a longstanding problem. I think it's, um, I think it's an accomplishment.
Thank you, member Anderson.
I did have one thing I wanted to add.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Member Pierce.
I do want to recognize member Jackson. For, uh, having the courage to do an apology. On Zoom or whatever this is, WebEx. And so I, I do appreciate that. Um. And I do think, um, when we have conversations like this, um, where. We don't all agree. I don't know that we all agree on one specific thing. Uh, we all kind of came at it differently, but I think when you're talking about team dynamics and. Uh, becoming a cohesive team, I think things like this actually propel you forward. So I did want to, to mention that.
Thank you, member Pierce. Thank you. Um, I, you know, I forgot to. Talk to council members about one thing last time we met and that was we had a fire over on Hibiscus and one of the. Residents of our community was concerned about. How long did it take us to get there? Uh, with the medics and how long did it take the fire engine to get there with the crew? And so I asked Major Neil to check on it and, um. Uh, I wanted to mention it at our last meeting and that was on May 12th, uh, 2021, uh, over on Hibiscus. Uh, it was a house under construction, as I recall, and ended up with a pretty serious fire. And I just wanted folks, uh, here on the council to know and also in the broader community that we were there. With our medics within six minutes of the time that they were dispatched. And the arrival time for Engine 81, which was the first fire engine to arrive. And it was a, a joint effort with some other fire stations, which is what we usually do from other, other communities. Uh, this joint agreement that we have. Uh, our fire engine was there, uh, in, uh, about seven minutes from the time they were dispatched. And our goal with our fire trucks being on site is eight minutes or faster. So they were there within the time that we set as a target for arrival. For a fire of that nature. So that was all I had. Um. So you, Major Neil, somebody asked me about the cost of lights on 58th and France and who is bearing that cost? I didn't, I didn't know whether that was all county or. Partly us. Maybe you can look at that.
Sure, we'll look that up.
Yeah. Uh, and then they wanted to know also the status on organized hauling, uh, Energy and Environment Commission working on that?
Actually, I think it's the ETC. I think it's transportation.
ETC, okay.
Yep.
So we need to check on that. And then, um. Uh, they, their observation is we need more benches done in our park. And then, um, I think Director Milner has been talking to this resident about, uh. Some of the patching that's been done on the, um. Block on Kellogg just north of Valley View. And it's in rough shape. So I think Director Milner will take a look at that. Those are, those are the things on my list. Yeah, yes, member Stoughton.
Can I just, on that organized hauling issue, one of the things that would be interesting to know, um, Mr. Neil is. As we are doing our compost work, if there's any way of gathering any data. About what that is doing to the volume of traditional trash or refuse. Because I'd be interested in seeing if that's shrinking and if that is shrinking, that might affect what we want to do in organized trash hauling. But it's just, just a big picture kind of notion. If we get it small enough that we can drown it in the bathtub, we may not have to worry about organized trash hauling.
Rover Nordquist style.
Yeah, there you go.
I, uh.
Yeah, well, I just have one other thing. I, I was just thinking about, I had a few comments that trailed on behind, uh, member Jackson and to the, uh, uh. To the extent any of those comments may have bothered member Pierce, my apologies for those. Alright, uh, Major Neil.
Uh, Director Milner, did you want to respond to one of those questions you popped on?
Well, 58th Street, the traffic signal. I don't have the final cost, but I can say that's not going to be an assessed item. That's coming out of our municipal state aid dollars. So we will look at the total project cost, look what was anticipated for assessments. The county is participating. In a portion of that work, but not the rework. So we're, I don't know the numbers, but it's municipal state aid.
And we can, when we do know the numbers, we can certainly share that with the council.
Correct.
Yep. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, for me. One. Uh, councilmember Stoughton started this discussion about July 20th. July 20th will be our return to live council meetings. Uh, I do need to know, not, not right now and on live cable access, but. I do need to know from, uh, members if, if there are, uh, concerns, uh, pandemic virus related concerns. That you have about meeting in the council chambers and if you have some concerns, if you could share those with me, uh, we've got some strategies about how to. Uh, how to deal with them. Uh, right now, we could just resume our, our positions on the council dais and. And go about having meetings like we did back in February of, of 2020. Um, but if there are some concerns about, uh, that would be alleviated by Plexiglas or, or distancing or something else. Uh, let me know what your personal concerns are and we'll take those into account.
Except we don't even have places to sit. We don't know where we sit on the council dais yet.
And, and with, because we have new council members, we do have some movement in who sits where. So. It's a very complicated protocol about how we determine these things and I'll, I'll get with councilmembers Pierce and Jackson about that here.
I, I just have one question, Major Neil.
Yeah.
I, I just, I just need to know what, what the official shade of green the tie is.
I, I actually, there is an official side. I can get the Pantone to you. In fact.
Three forty-seven.
Three forty-seven, green, three forty-seven. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, swimming pool, uh. Sad news, uh, that I had to share with you earlier today that we've had a, a major. Mechanical failure, an electrical failure to be more specific. In a piece of equipment that we need to, uh, to be able to operate the pool, um, safely. We were successful, I heard from, uh, our Parks and Rec director late this afternoon, we were successful in locating a replacement part. Uh, for the, for that, that piece of equipment that failed. Uh, and that's very, very good news because that can, that can make a, a very significant change in the length that the, of time that the pool is down. So. This is a, this is a, this is a story that's going to change rapidly. We hope. At least right now, it sounds like the, the time is going to be. Maybe shorter than what we had initially thought, but, uh, we can't make any, uh, strong commitments about that right now. Other than we do have a piece of equipment that looks like it's going to be very helpful to us and we need to acquire it and then get it installed. Um.
If you get that thing working by this weekend, you'll be a hometown hero. It's supposed to be 90 and I'm hearing the young moms, uh. In town are in revolt over the fact that the pool isn't going to be open. So.
We, we are very aware of that. Um, so yeah, all, uh. All necessary steps are being taken to get this resolved. As quick as we can. Uh, we have one more public, um. Public engagement meeting, uh, that's going to, a virtual meeting that's going to occur tomorrow night on. Gathering ideas from residents on how to best, uh, deploy our ARPA, our American Rescue Plan. Money, um, tomorrow night from seven to eight o'clock. It's a, a WebEx. Um, and we'll hope to have some additional input and then we'll be wrapping that up and bringing you, uh, a draft plan. On that, um, on that funding in, uh, June 15th. Uh, finally, uh, we received today from Representative Dean Phillips, uh. Was in Adana and he dropped by and he dropped a, a flag, an American flag off at. The police department and the fire department, um, in, that were flown at his request over the US Capitol, one during National Police Week and one during. Uh, National Firefighter Week. So, uh, those were very much appreciated and, uh, we'll have them in both of these buildings. Here for the future. And that's all I've got for you tonight.
Alright, thanks, Major Neil. Uh, that prompt anything from any council member? The follow-up, follow-on? Alright, do we have a, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For a second. Second, member Pierce, member Jackson moved. Any further discussion? Roll call please with respect to adjournment.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Aye.
Mayor Hublin?
Aye. We stand adjourned. That was, um, between the work session and the regular meeting, that was some heavy lifting there, everybody. That was. Good work.
So Clerk Allison, what time did you say?
Eleven twenty-five.
Oh, hot dog.
Should have taken the under.
Stay and talk amongst yourselves if you want to.
Yeah, if you want.